Hello, everyone. I want to welcome you to our town hall that is on the, this time it's on the 5th Tuesday. Contrary to belief, we moved this so that all the board could be here. We felt like this was an important topic. We want to hear what everybody has to say, and to have a partial board would not be fair to anyone. So, we want everyone on our board, this was a night that all of us could be here. We moved it because we want to hear what everyone has to say, and we want the whole board here so that they all can, you know, interact with everyone in person. So, we will get started. This is how our town hall's going to work. We had some people start to sign up, but it's not citizens' comments, so basically, we can just, you know, come up one at a time. When someone's finished, the next person can come up. We're not going to limit you on time. You can speak as long as you want. We want to hear what everyone, you know, feels about this project and other things that, you know, if anyone's here that's not about Barks East, we want to hear what you have to say as well, and try to answer some questions. We're in a laid-back atmosphere in our town halls so that we can just kind of dialogue. This is not something we can do in regular meetings, so we're, you know, just want to be laid back and just, you know, listen to everyone and try to answer questions. If we can't answer the questions, we have, you know, we will jot the questions down, and we'll get the answer for you and reach out to you. We do want this to be in orderly fashion. Please, you know, refrain from outbursts or anything like that. I think we can all do this in a, you know, respectful manner. So, without further ado, we'll take our first person to come up and just state your name, your address, and if you live in the county or city, please.
All right. Can anybody hear me? Correct? All right. You've got to make sure of that. My name's Justin Burrowsky. I live in Fairview, 7408 Helios Court. First, I want to cover a couple of different items. Oh, thank you. I'm actually going to ask that we make sure we talk into the mic, and this thing's, there we go. Okay. I've been to a few meetings prior, and I knew there's one thing I want to talk about. Been to a few meetings prior, and one of them is a quick reminder for the commissioners here is that remember to speak into the mic, just like I need to. It's kind of hard to hear people in the back, especially for those who have hard hearing, along with when you want to review the actual tapes online. Because of my unique background, that can be beneficial to the city, several members of the community asked me to review the traffic study and speak here tonight. A little bit about my background. I work for a Fortune 100 company in the Transportation Safety Department. My job is to evaluate and identify different levels of risks when new locations are selected. I ensure proper studies are completed that are independent and not affiliated with my particular company I work for. Or, if the city has a standard that we use their vendor to complete a study, it could be traffic study, environmental study, whatever that may be, we follow those particular procedures. I've been involved in over 400 new facilities, launches around the entire world, from LA to New York to Germany to Dubai. I focus primarily on the impact of transportation to a city. I hold several accreditations for different transportation organizations such as Department of Transportation, North America, Transportation Management Institute, and active in the Governor's Highway Safety Administration and National Transportation Safety Board. Now that you know a little bit about me, I want to let everybody know that I believe Fairview, growth for Fairview is positive, and I believe most of the individuals here tonight also believe that. With that being said, a couple of members of the community asked me to review the traffic study based on my experience and what I do for a living, which I do that, I've been doing that for about seven years. And with that being said, I've shared some of that with some of the people in the particular, I would say, the groups that I've talked to. With my understanding, I am actually calling for the city to pause on making any decision for new developments, residential or commercial, until a comprehensive traffic study is completed. The study needs to be independent from any builder and/or developer. This is not specific to Bark East, which most people are talking about here tonight. This is for any and all future developments. Most people want to know why? The current process allows, the city has, allows developers to do traffic studies for their specific build. It does not require them to include any other developments or local economic growth. Although Bark East's traffic study shows that there is an increase in traffic in certain places by more than 100%, my experience across the world and across the facilities I've evaluated is that the facts, that it does not include the other developments or the actual economic growth. My personal projection is it's going to be closer to a 175% increase, 175, 185. That's personal projection. It's not facts because we don't have a comprehensive traffic study here in the city. The traffic study also uses assumptions for local economic growth. This is much lower than the state and current city has. The study uses 1% local growth, but Fairview experienced more than 2% year-over-year. Without a comprehensive baseline study, if the city moves forward with this development, the decision will be made on inaccurate data. You, your names, and your family's legacy will be imprinted in Fairview forever. It's up to you, each member, to make the decision if you want this to be known as creating Franklin-Springfield 2.0, or Fairview as an example on how to manage economic growth in the future. I'm not here to tell you yes or no. I'm here to ask for a pause in any decisions before a comprehensive traffic study is completed. The study would be provided to the developers as a baseline. The baseline would then be used to feed that specific development traffic study. This process will measure the exact impact of every new development that comes to Fairview. I'm more than happy to bring my specific details on the traffic study to the board or any department that the city wants. My experience is global, and I believe it's a very large value that I can share with the city as we work to grow forward. Lastly, through my experience around the world, I've seen cities become very creative on how they engage developers, state and federal departments of transportation to improve the city's road infrastructure. It varies from self-funding at state, from the state and federal with credit-back options for certain developments. It also has seen others where we require them to go and increase the priority at the different state or city agencies. It's your legacy that you're leaving. I hope that you make the correct decision in pushing for a comprehensive traffic study before any other development is determined. Again, I'm not here to say yes or no. I'm looking forward to this group and other planning commissions to take this in consideration as this is the future for you, your family, and the citizens here, as we grow a safe city. Thank you for letting me speak. I greatly appreciate it.
If you could, hold on. If you could just, if anyone could just stay up to the podium so that we can ask questions.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Hopefully, hey, can we also maybe get this thing so it doesn't do this much?
You can take the mic off if you want.
I'll start dancing or something. We don't want to do that.
Your what?
I might start dancing or something. You don't want that. So, I, what, oh, I'm just going to do this for now. What questions do you have?
I have my first one.
Yes, sir.
I'm on record for wanting a traffic study that the city pulls, not the developer. And I've been asked about it, but right now, it's not in our ordinance that we can do that. So, that's one thing I would push forward to get, I'd like to have two opinions on a traffic study. And while you're there, how expensive is a traffic study?
Traffic studies can vary. It really depends. Like, I think this is where maybe the planning commission and the city needs to think about how they want to do this. There's different ways that traffic studies have been done. A city can put a bid out, of course, find a third-party company that will manage your traffic study. So, every time a new developer comes into town, you send them to this traffic study company, and what they'll be able to do is say, okay, here's the baseline, we'll do it with their information, and they, you know, it's always your third-party source. They can vary from $5,000 to $20,000. A baseline traffic study, they include economic growth, they do a comprehensive study with it, averages about five years in projections. So, it would be a single cost upfront unless you want to do a retainer for them to update more often. But those are all contract terms. So, I believe, in my opinion, that this would be the most beneficial because this is a fact, it would be fact-based decisions, right? I know there's a lot of individuals that may come up later and talk about some non-facts and just feelings about it, but this is facts. I like facts, so I think it's a great thing, and I would love for you to be behind that.
Well, look, is it possible if we do our, have our own traffic study, can it not be passed back to the developer for that traffic study? The cost of it?
You can. You, as the board, can put essentially the process, right? So, if you put a process in place that somebody needs to come in and that wants to apply to rezone or build, you can put it in your process. Okay, you're going to use this, you have to do a comprehensive traffic study. The problem you're going to have is nine times out of 10, you need to provide basic information to them. What is your economic growth? What is the current development, any development that has not been completed? Those need to be included. That's kind of like, that's the baseline. So, unfortunately, you can, you know, a baseline is required, so you'll have those facts to give to the developer, and then go to a third party. I would say one of the concerns that I noted in the traffic study of Bark East is although there's a, a third-party collected the data, the developer actually did the calculations in the study. I don't believe that's correct. I've never been allowed to do that for my corporation. We've always had to use a third party for everything, so it's completely independent.
Well, the way it is right now, if we did a traffic study, it would fall back eventually on the citizens to pay for that traffic study because it'd be city dollars that would have to pay for it.
Of course.
And I would look at to, like to see it, you know, even if it were split, you know, with the developer and the city. But I'd like to at least have our viewpoint rather than a one-sided traffic study myself.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you for your information.
Absolutely.
And I didn't catch your name.
My name's Justin Burrowsky. Again, I'm more than happy to come in and talk with any member of, any of the boards and bring my experience to the table.
Thank you.
On what different cities and countries do in this space.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else before I speak? Okay. Mr. Burrowsky, do you live in Fairview?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, how long have you lived here?
About four years.
Okay. So, do you agree that most of our traffic is on Highway 100?
I normally leave before the traffic starts because I try to avoid it. I have seen traffic when I have been home, I see a lot of it is on 100, and it's off-shoots, primarily between our turnoff to 96 and just past the schools.
We are in the process right now of a traffic light at Cumberland and Crow Cut and 100, Fairview Boulevard, which will be great for our community. Patty Carroll, our Economic Development Officer, sitting in the front here, and myself, we meet with T.DOT pretty much every month. We just had a seven-person panel, and I want to let everyone know that I'm fact-finding tonight as well. I'm not speaking on emotion. It's all about facts. What I'm going to give you are facts that I have, you know, gotten over the past month. And I've got a plan, and after the meeting, you're more than welcome, there's a plan that, Bark East up front here. It's got a number for T.DOT, a number for TDEC, and it shows you the wetlands on this property as they're highlighted. So, everyone can, if you want to take a picture of that, that's fine. So, I think everyone probably would agree here that Highway 100 is our most impacted road in Fairview. So, my question would be, since you've got Bellevue, Nashville, Centerville, Dixon, Bon Aqui, Lyles, all growing, and traveling 100 daily, how do we control them for the increase of traffic on our Highway 100? Because it's not just Fairview that's impacting 100.
There's a lot of different ideas that I've heard planning commissions do in my travels. A lot of them is bring businesses because that brings additional revenue for people that don't live here. And I know that's kind of restricted on 100 for that. The other portions is really more about education. That's just like, kind of, how do you prevent somebody not to come through your town? I've heard of some interesting things where people will work with Google, where they get routed around certain roads because of traffic, based on the city's recommendations and requests. Those are options. I could not recommend those, but I've heard of those. When you have traffic like we have on 100, this is where the cities, I've seen some very creative ways to change traffic or get things funded, and that's more where it is. There's a lot of federal grants that people go to.
We're not eligible for federal grants.
I'm just saying what some of the items are.
We're not eligible for federal grants.
And the other one, there's been deals that have been made with states where they self-fund, and there's a bill back on tax. There's a bunch of different ways to go about it. I can create a comprehensive list that I've experienced, and I can provide it to the board here.
So, Patty and our city manager and I met with T.DOT, like I said, a panel last week. They gave a lot of good information about several different developments that impact 100 and how the traffic can be alleviated. So, just curious, show of hands, how many people have reached out to T.DOT in the room? Okay, so we have two, four, six, eight, eight people. Okay, that's where you get your facts. When we have T.DOT out here to speak to us, then they give us information so that we can make a good decision and work with the developers on improvements that they can take on themselves at their expense to help alleviate traffic. Unfortunately, like you were saying about federal grants, we get none. We're rural, and that's a designation that we have. Patty was with me the last time we spoke with Steve Allen, the director of T.DOT. And unfortunately, until we have more rooftops and more citizens, we get no federal dollars. So, we will not have road widenings until that happens. So, Highway 100 is going to stay the way it is until we have more rooftops and more citizens. That's not a Lisa thing, that's a T.DOT thing. So, as far as alleviating traffic, we're working right now on Northwest Highway, which, when that intersection is finished, and then Northwest Highway, which is on the record right now to be worked on, it's going to be a three-lane road with a turning lane, which will be an alternate route off of 100 to go to 96. So, we're working very hard to make sure that because we're not able to get that road widening right now, that we can have some type of alternate route that is, you know, good for our citizens. So, I guess the other question is, like, so you mentioned a moratorium, so that means that we're supposed to stop growing while everybody else around us grows and impacts our Highway 100?
That's not exactly what I'm saying.
Okay.
I'm petitioning or saying that, hey, before we make any more decisions just based on, hey, we want to grow the city, we need to grow it correctly with facts. The information that was provided in this particular subdivision is missing a lot of our current development that's been approved and across the board, right? Like, if you really look at the traffic study, it calls for 1% growth. Fairview's grown over 2% year-over-year, and so the traffic study has already undercut that. That's one key factor of it. The second part of it is they did a one-day study. A one-day study is actually not the national requirement through, I keep forgetting the very specific book that's listed, but it's actually one week, and that includes weekends. So, I think the traffic study is missing a lot of information that actually will show everybody the detailed impact. And so, by doing a comprehensive study, it allows you and any other commissioners in the future to have a baseline of, this is the actual traffic that we have. If you want to come in and develop in our city, we need you to do a traffic study. Here's the baseline of, this is what we currently have in these places. And so, they take that and get another traffic study done, and it shows their specific impact. Because right now, I don't know of any impact of where we are right now. T.DOT has some documentation, but they don't do a standard, I would say, it's a three or four years, I believe, what the DOT requires for federal highways. Cities are a little different. So, it's, I'm not asking to stop, I'm asking to pause. Let's get the right information to make the informed decision, not only for you, also for the citizens.
So, when we spoke with T.DOT last week, they said that we could bring any development before them, and they would help us to determine how to alleviate traffic.
That's wonderful if they want to do that, and, you know.
And there's no charge to our citizens for that.
That sounds like a great alternative to, to traffics, or I would say, it helps with a traffic study.
And the traffic study that was done on Northwest Highway, just a part, just a portion of it, was upwards of $20,000.
It's about right.
So, we've got to consider everything. I do, you know, I want to consider the traffic, I want to consider the cost, but if we can have T.DOT work with us on different projects that are going on out here to help us find better, you know, better solutions, then I think saving our taxpayers' money and going with T.DOT and having them review our plans before, you know, at the very beginning, is probably the best way to do this.
Absolutely. As long as what's been approved, those projections are included. If those particular items are not included in any type of study, then the study's actually incomplete. And Bark East is a really, really great example of that. It just talks about what that particular development will do. But there's not, there's not a baseline of what, everything that's been approved is available. I guess my question to the board, more to maybe figure out, is if everything is built that's currently on plan to be developed, what does our traffic look like if all of them were built today? What would that traffic look like today? I don't think.
And I'm going to also say, all of the other cities, have you seen Bellevue? All the other cities that are growing by leaps and bounds. I know that, you know, we can't say that Fairview alone is the traffic on 100. It's not.
It's not.
If you look at the traffic and you look at the times of day that the traffic happens, it's going to work, it's going home from work, and it's during school time.
And a traffic study helps measure that, right?
Absolutely. And, you know, but that's something that the board would have to consider, but also, you know, I think reaching out to T.DOT where we can, we can meet with them anytime we want to, and it doesn't cost the taxpayers anything.
And that's a great alternative, if T.DOT's willing to do a comprehensive study. I think a comprehensive study allows everybody to have visibility into the actual impact, currently, future, and any new developments. So.
But, like I said, they would have to consider all the cities around us as well because as they grow, they're going to impact 100 as well.
Correct. And a traffic study includes, it does your local, it does your cities, you look at your state. So, like, I don't know if you've actually commissioned any type of particular traffic study, but they take everything into account in the area. They look at the vehicle counts and different hours, they look at your local growth and state growth, local county growth, and neighboring cities because that's where, like you said, majority of your traffic comes from.
But we can only make the decisions for Fairview. We can't make the decisions for the other cities who are growing and affect our community.
Correct.
There, I will say, just to your point, I think that a major plan would include the outside surrounding areas. That's kind of what you're saying is, if we did a major traffic plan or a comprehensive traffic study, we would include some of that growth area in those studies so we have a better educated guess. The, I think that there's some development counted in there, I was trying to log in because there is a pre-built horizon and a post-built horizon.
Correct.
The traffic study has some weird things in there where they're the same. I don't know how they would be the same, but I think that there are some development numbers in there, but you're correct, I'm not sure what it's accounting into. And there's going to ask the question of, can we still, have we sent this to T.DOT if they're ready, available to review? Have we sent it, this plan, or no?
We've talked to them about, we've talked to them about this plan, and that was what we talked about last week, part of it, and they just said that from now on, what they'd like for us to do is anything that is projected to, or at the beginning, to send the plans over to them at the beginning so that they can help, you know, with the traffic. Talking to us about how we can alleviate traffic and what the developer can do, whether it be, you know, turn lanes, or, you know, we have a situation in Fairview, I think everybody knows, that we have a turn lane and then not a turn lane, a turn lane and then not a turn lane. And one thing, you know, I know that they said that, you know, T.DOT said that we're rural and we can't get the federal dollars, but they are putting in sidewalks, and I said, well, you know, is there enough room at least for a turn lane all the way through Fairview? And that's something that they're considering. So, I'm just hoping that at least until we can get to a place to where it can be widened, that we would have continual turning lanes. Also, one thing they said is when development comes here, we, you know, make sure that they do all of their sidewalks and turn lanes so that's not something that our community has to foot the bill for. And it also will, you know, connect in some parts, and also, we can ask them to do the connections so that we have continual turn lanes and not the break, you know, intermittent.
Correct.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Ms. Andrews, we can't hear you very well. Can you, thank you.
I live at 2542 Fairview Boulevard, and it's right past Cumberland and Crow Cut. Very first house. I'm in the SCUSA. I have a nephew and a niece that catch the bus. My nephew has special needs, and every morning, the bus comes, stops, puts on, you know, the yellow lights, and guess what happens? Here comes the cars this way. Guess what they do? They zoom up, zoom right by it, fast as they can, before the stop sign gets out. It's dangerous because he's special needs. I don't think he'll dart out, but what if he darts out? You know, we could have a very serious accident right there. I mean, you see the bus, it's big, it's yellow. How can you miss it? How can you miss these big lights? And I know we have police on the corner, but they're up here, so they're further up, so they probably don't see, they don't see what's happening there. So, it's just a very dangerous situation, you know? And for what, two? They want to get two seconds down the road? They can't wait for the child to get on the bus. I mean, a few seconds, that could save his life. And the other thing is, at least once a week, I sit in my house, and guess what? I hear a crash, right there at Cumberland, about once a week. Also, if I want to go out in my driveway to the left, guess what? I can't go out in my driveway because all the cars are right in front of my driveway. I have to turn to get out, I have to go into the other lane to get out, and they're all blocked right there. So, my driveway's blocked that way. Then if I want to go right, I've got to watch these people here, I've got these people coming here. The only way I get out is if somebody stops. The only way I get out, if somebody stops and lets me pull out, you know? So I'm kind of stuck in my house from, say, 7:30, maybe till 9:30 or 10:00. In the afternoons, I'm stuck in, during the school zone. If I want to get out, I better get out early, get back in. So it's just, it's a really inconvenience. I feel like sometimes a prisoner in my own home. And the other thing is, right across from me, there are five acres there, that they're going to build something there, multi-use, I got a letter about that. I think that's going to come out on Cumberland, but I don't know how much more traffic that's going to put, you know, people coming across my house. So, I mean, and I know you can't, I can't, I can't tell people that they, that they can't, you know, pull up in front of my driveway. It's a, it's a street. But some people are courteous, but then some are not courteous, you know? And so that's just some of the concerns I have about it. And I mean, I understand we have to build, I understand we need homes and things like that. And then I have neighbors down below me a little bit, too, that probably have the same kind of issues that I have. So, anyway, it's just, that's what I'm kind of concerned about, is getting out of my home safely, and for my niece and nephew.
Ms. Andrews, you reached out to me personally, and I've gone and looked at your driveway, and it is a situation, being that close to the highway and then cars backing up because of the schools. I would like to ask, I mean, anybody who's watching and people here, if we could just, you know, pass on the word to, let's, you know, try to be courteous of people who have that situation, because, I mean, if you're that close to a highway and the schools, it's hard when the cars back up, and especially, you know, when we do eventually have our light there, you know, cars will still back up. And so I just really encourage people to be courteous and, and, you know, let people out if they're in that situation. Thank you.
Ms. Andrews?
Yes.
I sure hope that the bus driver is taking license plate numbers down, if they're doing that. I really hope that they do that.
I don't see how she could.
It's so fast, it's happening so fast.
Well, she's here, and they're coming this way.
So they're going the opposite way.
They're going this way while she's sitting here, so she's not able to see them. But they know she's there. I mean, they, she comes from here, she's got on her yellow lights.
Right.
So they have time, they know she's coming, but they don't want to wait.
Well.
So they just want to zoom by her.
That's another thing that we have explained to TDOT, is the problem at that intersection.
If our child wasn't special needs-
Yes, ma'am.
It wouldn't be as much of a concern. But that's what's the concern. Like I said, I don't think he would ever dart out. I mean, my husband and I are, we're out there with him, but, I mean, we can't, we're not holding his hand.
Yeah.
But, I mean, he could decide to dart out or something. And then what are they going to do?
Well, I do hate the people in that big rush myself, you know, so, but anyway, I'm sorry that this is happening to you.
They would just slow down right there.
Yeah.
Officer Meadows, maybe you could mention, when y'all are in your meetings, for the officers to just kind of keep a watch out while they're down there during the school zones, for any situation like that happening. And if someone passes a school bus like that, we need to take care of that issue.
I mean, their stop sign's not out yet, so obviously, they're supposed to stop before it's out, but they know it's coming out, and they're speeding up before it gets out there. So they know, they intentionally know what they're doing. And this is our first year to have these children, so it hasn't been a concern till right now. Thank you.
Thanks. Who's next?
Tim Cunningham, I'm down at 7304 Valley Road, here in Fairview. And he's talking about having TDOT, they's going to do this and do that, do that. Well, I remember, right there in front of Stop and Save, because I live on the west side of town, all the way up past our new subdivision's coming in now, and right after it snowed and all the ice, from Stop and Save all the way past Jerry Cropper's house, the road was tore all to pieces. Stayed that way for over a month, people was actually diving down in the ditches, just to keep from hitting all the rough stuff that run from here to the highway. And I'm talking about big potholes. To me, when you see that many potholes, I mean just stretches of it, on both sides of the roads, in busy parking lots, like Stop and Save, whatever, our police department, our city council, would get on there and say, hey, look, TDOT, y'all need to get up here and patch these holes. But you know what? After about a month and a half, I got tired of driving through it. I called down there at TDOT and told them, I got a personal friend, his name is Andy Cordant. He'll be up here tomorrow afternoon at y'all's office, if y'all not out here patching these holes. Guess what? They was out there the next morning, they worked on it for about a half a day, then they brought the big trucks in and went to paving.
Well, I appreciate you doing that.
I understand, but, I mean, we got to work as a community.
Absolutely, that's what I'm saying.
I'm not the only person doing it.
That's what I'm saying.
It all it takes is just a little bit of bluff.
A little bit of bluff?
A little bit of bluff.
A little bit of bluff, okay.
Little bit of bluff.
Okay.
I mean, y'all know what's going on, y'all run through them same potholes, why don't y'all say something?
Well, Tim, I tell you, our city manager reached out to TDOT about the potholes, and-
One phone calls, I don't know.
But you know what? You gave us a better, a better option, and we'll just get in touch with Andy Cordant. I tell you what, we'll get in touch with you next time, because you-
Hey, that's fine.
You had-
If you can't get it done, maybe I can.
You know what? That's what I'm saying.
If you can't get it done, maybe I can.
You did such a great job, I'm going to call you, and I'm going to say, your special friend that you have at TDOT, let's get on it.
If it's not done a little while, I'm going to do it anyway.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you helping us out.
This subdivision we got going in out there, I'm totally against it. Mr. Hall, I hope you're going to get on board with this, Stuart you as well. Ms. Lisa, I'm praying you do. We don't need it, we got too much traffic out there right now. That one-day Times traffic study y'all done, y'all know that ain't sufficient. And as far as taking it back on the citizens to pay for it, Mr. Hall, that ought not happen. If you want the developer to build out there, he ought to be fixing it, not us.
I agree.
Not us. You let him fix that thing. I don't want no part of it. I don't want the subdivision out there. If you want to build the houses, you go ahead and build the houses. That's all I got to say. But leaving them townhomes that's going to be rented out, all that riffraff is going to come with it, I don't want it. Stuart, I don't want it. Mr. Hall, I don't want it.
Why, let me ask you this, Tim. We got Brandon Butler up here, and we got Chris McDonald up here.
Yeah, why is it just us three?
Why are you singling us out?
Well-
Yeah, don't single us out.
Well, I think I know how y'all want to vote already.
No, you don't.
You do?
I think you've already made up your mind.
I don't think you know how I'm going to vote.
Have you spoken to me personally?
Listen, listen.
No.
I can tell by the way you talk to people about it.
Okay.
I can really tell by the way you talk to people about it, Lisa. You've already made up your-
But you're welcome to come talk to me personally about it.
You are pushing, Ms. Lisa, for this to go through. You know it, and I know it.
Okay, I'm sorry, say, why am I pushing for it to go through?
Well, maybe you're not, okay? Maybe I stand corrected. We'll see how you vote. I hope y'all hear everything that everybody's got to say, every, all of you. Just listen to them, hear what they got to say. And, and what is it, the fifth we're going to vote on it? Is it the fifth?
Yes, it is, uh-huh.
Okay. Can you not hear me? So the fifth, we're going to vote on it, we'll see how we vote.
Well, I would just ask that citizens not verbally accost people in the middle of parking lots, businesses, and tell them they better vote no. I don't think that's very appropriate.
Who did that? Who did that?
You know who did that. You know who did that.
Vote no. Everybody vote no.
I'm more than happy to talk with anyone, but if some, it didn't happen to me, but if someone comes and verbally accosts somebody in the middle of a parking lot in front of witnesses, and I hear about it, that's not the way to go about it. Any of these board members are willing to speak-
I had trash coming, dumping off my trash. I talked to Mr. Hall a bunch of times, it didn't have to be about that subdivision, but I was on my mind at the time.
You also said not to vote on it at that particular situation, too.
You told him he better vote no, is what you said.
Well, was he there?
I've, there were, well, there were witnesses that were there. I just don't think it's a good idea for, you can talk, you can talk to any of us, and we're more than willing to listen, but-
I had a witness, too, and I'm pretty sure, hey, please vote no. Please vote no.
No.
Hey, I can't pull a trailer, get out and move over there right now, and you're going to put that subdivision in between them valleys right there, and you can't see coming over them hills, none of them. Look what you done out here at Cox Pike. You put that red light up in here, if you're coming in from Nashville, traffic's backed up to the interstate. That's a joke.
Tim, I'm the one that's standing up at 2:00 every morning, researching all the facts in this.
Stay on it, Tom.
And I do, but, man, I'm 81 years old, and I have to have a little bit of rest every once in a while. But I'm doing everything I can, every fact finding mention I can come up with to try to get, see what the best option is.
Just look at it, Pat.
I am looking at it. I am looking at it, big time.
Good time, good. Thank y'all for your time. At least I didn't mean to offend anybody, and I don't want to offend anybody, but I want to be heard, and I want y'all to hear everybody here.
And you know what? I'm more than, I'm more than happy for everyone to be heard, but I think we can do it in a respectful way and not-
Is that disrespectful?
Yes. Not today, I'm not talking about today.
Well, that's admirable, hey, I didn't say that.
Who's next?
I had something I wanted to give you all. Had something I wanted to give you all, if I can. I got copies of, this is just people that signed paper that are concerned citizens, that's all this. I don't know how many names, 100 or so, all of them live in Fairview. Just concerned about the, about the development. So, you know, I ain't going to talk very long, there are a lot of other people want to say something, but basically, you know, what I want to say is, I mean, I know every one of you, y'all are my friends, neighbors, known you, long as I've lived here, most of you now, a couple I hadn't known that long, but, I mean, y'all are my friends, and after this is over with, however it goes, you're still going to be my friends, you're still going to be my neighbors, we're still going to live right here. You know, I'll probably live here the rest of my life, right in Fairview, we all got to live right here. But, you know, one thing I wish you would consider, and I know you do, but I just kind of want to make a point, the responsibility, and then this is just the way I see it, I don't know what the code calls, what the law calls for, or anything, but you guys are kind of like a judge, you know, you got the scales here, and you have to decide what's best for our community. And, and you have to take in consideration and weigh the possibilities of every vote, and the probabilities of every vote, you know, what's probably going to happen. And for the citizens of Fairview, and that's the citizens that are here right now, that the citizens of Dogwood Drive and Cumberland Drive, the citizens that are going to live in this development aren't here, yet. They didn't vote you guys in. They don't have a vote. The developer, although he, I'm sure he pays city property tax, and I don't think I'm speaking out loud, I don't think he lives here. He didn't vote for you all. And I was thinking, I was sitting on my bed before I came, thinking, I think, I voted, and I'm pretty sure this is correct, I voted for everybody up there on the board, at one time or another, may have been years ago, but I voted for everybody. And I, and I respect y'all's decisions and your responsibility, because it is a big responsibility. But I asked you that you consider the feelings and the, along with everything else, you know, you have to consider the traffic, you have to consider the tax base that the development's going to bring in, but also consider the feelings and the, of the people that surround, and not just immediately surround the community that's being built, but, you know, the whole community. Because, you know, they're your constituents, I mean, they're the people that voted you in. So you have a responsibility to represent them. I mean, you really are representatives that, that are here to protect us. And, you know, that's, that's all I got to really ask. And I had a couple of things. One thing, you talked about the traffic study on Northwest Highway, it cost $20,000. So who paid for that? Did the city pay for that, or did the developer pay for it?
Tom, did we pay for that, or did the developer pay for that? The developer paid for it.
Could we not do the same thing with this? Just a, that's just a question, I don't have to have an answer. So on the-
Has there not already been a traffic study on this project? Yeah.
Wasn't $20,000 traffic study, though, I bet.
And they paid for it, and TDOT weighed in on it as well.
I mean, we already touched bases, pretty inaccurate, just a one-day traffic study. Surely they didn't charge $20,000 to do a one-day traffic study on Northwest Highway? I'd hope not, but, but anyway, that's just a question. So, in your discussions with the TDOT, how many rooftops do we need? If they've said, you know, you can't widen Highway 100 because the population's not big enough, not enough, so does it need to be 20,000? Does it need to be 30,000, or 40,000, or 100? So what is the number there? What's the magic number we need to be at before that happens?
That's a good question, I'll find that out. Because we were just told that we're considered rural, we don't meet the threshold, and no widening until that happens, so I can get a number for you. But it's not, we're not close.
Mm-hmm.
So.
But we really don't know, then, that's just an open-ended book that, would they-
Put it this way, they don't think that we're going to get there before 10 years.
Okay.
And that's what they told me.
So, on the wetlands that's on this project, did, so I know you've been talking to TDEC and all that, so what do they actually say? Like, so the pond, I assume the pond is the farm pond there, that is considered a wetland, correct?
You can see on that project, there's six acres of wetlands.
Mm-hmm.
Now, let me, let me ask this, too, because I'm, I just am curious, how many show of hands have reached out to TDEC? Okay, so we have two? Two. So we have eight for TDOT, and two for TDEC. The only reason I'm asking that is because I'm offering, on that piece of paper right there, if you want to take a picture, TDOT, the director, Steve Allen, his number's on that paper, and also, the man with TDOT, or TDEC, who talked to me, that's environmental and conservation, he talked to me for a couple hours the other day, when I reached out to him. What I did was, I did hash marks over the six acres of wetlands that's on that plan right there. What he told me is that with this piece of property, with the wetlands, they go all the way across the property, and then if you notice, they kind of go off at an angle. So basically, with the way the wetlands are laid out, you have to account for 12 acres, if there's any type of mitigation. And mitigation is the only way that you can handle the wetlands on a piece of property. So what that means is, if you have, say, like, an Amazon, this is exactly what they do for these large corporations that can't avoid the wetlands on property. what they do for these large corporations that can't avoid the wetlands on property. If it's an Amazon, um, Nissan, uh, GM, or Volkswagen, or big corporations like that, what they allow them to do is they allow them to mitigate, and what that means is they allow them to move the wetlands to another part of the property. So, because big corporations like that can't avoid hitting some type of wetland. Now, there's another situation, if the wetland directly affects or directly flows into a river, a creek, something like that, there's a whole different situation with that, because they don't want anything dammed up where the water can affect the neighbors. So, in this mitigation process, when, um, they saw this plan, and we went over this, it would be, um, it would be impossible to move the wetlands to begin with, but they said that it would, if businesses were come in this area, they don't have the type of money to do the mitigation process for this. Because in the beginning, I was like, wow, this is zone commercial? How neat would this be for us, you know, since we only have commercial corridor, basically down 100, for us to have some type of commercial, like a Target, or, you know, something like that there? Well, the wetlands on this property directly affect that, and most small businesses, and, you know, Target's not a, an Amazon, or any of these big corporations, they can't afford to do the mitigation process. So what you're looking at is, you're having to do something like, um, this plan has commercial up front, it has, um, you know, the townhome section in the middle, and then it has the single-family homes on outs, on the backside. But that, the way that is laid out, and the way the, the wetlands are all the way through this property, it limits the property as to what can be built there. So that's, that's all I'm saying about that.
Okay. So, uh, I've been over and walked around, looked at the pond, and looked how the, how the land, the topography is, and I would think everybody really needs to go over there and just pull in the driveway and look, and see what it looks like now. So, the wetlands is the farm pond that Mr. Sullivan built, and where the dam is, the water, there's no water there right now, but I'm sure when it rains and the water runs through the spillway, runs down a little hollow. So the hollow bears to the right. Highway 100 is up here to the left. So there are, in that area, between the wetlands and Jefferson's and 100, on this plan, there's 10 houses, 40 units of, of, uh, townhomes, 40 units and 10 houses. That's built on the Highway 1, that's proposed to be built on the Highway 100 side of the wetlands. So could not that, those homes be that area, and I'm gonna say there's probably six or seven acres, just looking at it, now I didn't measure it, but I would say it's in that neighborhood. So could you not take that six or seven acres and have 16 or 18 acres of commercial, and that would disperse the density of the, of the project right there by getting rid of 10 houses and, uh, 40, uh, townhomes? Is that a possibility?
Well, the, there's nothing built on top of the wetlands.
No, no.
That, that's not allowed. There's the wetlands in a buffer, and it shows that on the plan, but, um, commercial-
So what I'm saying, what I'm saying is, the area that's not on the wetlands, between the wetland and Highway 100, there's proposed the, the townhomes and the homes. So why could that not be on the table to use that for commercial instead of the residential?
Most commercial wants to be on the highway, if it's a-
It is on the highway.
Well, I mean, on, up front, on the highway. So, I mean, you know, that's, I mean, the plan is the plan, but if there's alternates to the plan, then, I mean, I would encourage you to meet with the developer and give him your ideas. I mean, there's no problem, there's no problem with anybody in this room meeting with the developers, it, you know, this board, I mean, we meet with them, but there's, you know, just like getting the potholes fixed, I mean, meeting with the developers and giving-
Isn't that, isn't that your responsibility to bring that up to them, not ours?
Well, you, okay, okay, hold on. To be fair, to be fair, you're coming up with a different plan, and why not go straight to the developer with your new plan that you'd like to see on this, on this, uh, project?
All right, that's all I gotta say, and I really appreciate you guys, appreciate-
I have a, I have a question.
Okay.
Okay. And no disrespect meant at all, meant by this at all, because Craig, you and I have known each other for, gosh, probably 30 years.
Mm-hmm.
And we've worked on many projects together, and you and Janet have, we've always been friends, okay? I want you to answer a question, when we sat and had dinner the other night, last Sunday, not this past, but the one before, you answered a question of mine, and I want you to answer it again.
Okay.
If this project were a few miles down the road in Fairview, would it matter to you?
It would matter to me, it would not be as passionate to me. I mean, I, I think that is, I don't know how unnatural that is, you know, it's right across the road from my house, you know? It impacts me more than it does you. That's just a fact, I mean, it's just right across the street. So, am I more passionate about it than if it was on Highway 96, out by the truck stop? Absolutely. I can't help that, that's just, that's just the way it is, you know? Uh, would it be as matter to all these people here that live on Dogwood, and Cumberland, and Crowcut, if it was on, if it was over on Northwest Highway? Probably not. I mean, that's just, that's just human nature, I mean, we can't, uh, do I think I'm gonna be more involved in the future, and I hope these people are too, because this is the best thing that's come out of all this, is these people here coming out and being involved and taking a stand with what they believe in, you know, that's the best thing that's happened.
And I get that, I get that everyone's passionate about this, but I asked you a simple question, I said, if this were a couple miles down the road, would it matter to you? And your answer was one answer, you said no.
I don't remember saying no. Now, I, I, it would matter to me, whether it would matter to me, whether I'd be up here talking, maybe not, probably not, but it wouldn't matter to me. Now, I don't know that I said, I don't remember, I do not recall, I'm not saying that, that what I said or didn't say, I do not recall saying that it would not matter at all. I can't believe that I would've said that.
I need to say something to Mr. Cropper when you're through.
Go ahead.
In my meetings with this developer, the traffic study in front of your property has been one of my concerns, about getting it extended, to where at least, this, you come out, at least you've got a turning lane to get in there. The other thing is, I have asked for all the townhomes to be sold, not rented, and part of that is my research with White House Tennessee, where they have actually had a project going in up there, and, uh, it started out with 330 units up there, 90 of them were to be sold, the other 240 to be rental. That changed later till they were all to be sold, and I've asked for that over and over and over again, for that to happen in this particular development, if it could be possible. And my concern is the, the neighbors to go around on the backside, where we've, uh, recently found out that, uh, and I told you out there at the dumpster site the other day, and I would say that, I think you was the one that called Tim down, because you told him that, uh, I had to talk to the attorney, that you and I were discussing that, that I still had some questions that I had with the attorney. But part of that is, we found out, and I think you, you was the one that texted me, but I told you I'd already run across that in the 2040 plan, where the surrounding neighbors, uh, should be at least 20,000 square foot lots, and that's in the 2040 plan. And that being the case, I don't know how the vote's gonna go, but, uh, if that's, you know, the case that, uh, once codes tells me that that's what the 2040 plan says, and that's my research, and I, like I said, I go to 2:00 every morning with that 2040 plan until I lean it out, but I still got it in my head, I got a photographic memory.
Well, I printed it out, and you know, I, I think everyone should print the 2040 plan out, it's great, I mean, it's 190 pages, but you print it out and read it, I mean, it's just a, it's, it's great.
It's a good plan, when I run for election, I said it was the best plan, I was part of the 2020 plan, uh, and this, I complimented the staff that done that before, and the, the engineering that firm that done it, it's a good plan, an excellent plan, better than the one we were a part of 20 years ago. But my concern's been the neighbors and Highway 100 all along, and, uh, and I haven't quit doing my research, I've still got some more things to, to hash out, and-
Wayne, I think it's every, you know, really, the two, two main things, you know, is the neighbors and Highway 100, that's, that's the two most important things, now it's not the only thing, but it is the most-
That's the development, anytime a development like this comes along, that's, that's the ones that's, uh, you know, concerned about it. And I'm concerned as, as a, uh, commissioner, and if you go back, uh, many, many, many years, uh, Brownland Farms started out at 975 units, it's down to 484 now, and I was one that led the charge back in those days with the help of the planning commission to start the reduction part of that. The first reduction was down to 725 lots, and that was part of me and the planning commission at that time. When that developer came to me right here at this seat, right here, that first started that, he come up and said, you just cost me $40,000. I said, well, if you'll do your research, we don't have the zoning that you're asking for, and I said, the codes department should've informed you of that, because we didn't have a zoning for a 10,000 square foot lot. I said, you need to go back and do your own research and find out what the city offers. So that's, that's the way I look at things, you got to follow the, the regulations that we have in place today, and that's another, uh, thing that I'm gonna work on now, is to see what the 2040 plan calls for the, the people down Glen Haven, as far as them backing up to the unit.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, everybody.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Chad Warren, my address is 7114 Glen Haven Drive, I'm a citizen of Fairview. Um, Mr. Hall, I appreciate your input on that 2040 plan, because I'm gonna tell you guys, I've been reading the 2040 plan, and it's kinda, kinda brain-wracking to go through, to say the least. Um, my personal opinion on this 2040 plan is there's, uh, it's not my personal opinion, what it is, is set up for a roadmap or a guide for our city to continue to grow. However, I feel like there's bits and pieces that we want to implement in, and there's other pieces that we try maybe to not go with as much, I don't know, is that fair to say?
Well, like you said, it's a guide, so we try to use it as a guide.
Right. Well, as us as a citizen, trying to use it for a guide on what needs to be implemented and what's not implemented, it's brain-wracking trying to figure out what are, what are, what is our city gonna implement, and what is our city not gonna implement? Yes, sir, Mr. Hall.
It also states in there that it needs to be reviewed every two to five years.
Okay.
You remember reading that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, uh, and I'm not familiar with that, I have, when was the last time that was reviewed?
It hasn't been done in two years, I know for sure.
Anybody have any idea? So it hasn't been reviewed since 2019, I guess? Is that when it was implemented?
I believe that's correct.
Um, I'm, I'm like everybody else, you know, hey, if, I don't know if there's anybody in here that is supportive of, of this type development, but if you are, would you mind raising your hand, standing up? I'm not, nobody's here gonna judge you, okay? Anybody? Going once, going twice? If you are opposed to this type of development, would you please raise your hand? There's not a lot more than I can say. The, the, the facts state for itself, the citizens state for theirself, and we, we do, I'm, I'm kinda like Craig, I've spoke to each and every one of you individually, with either a phone call or a personal conversation. You guys know how I feel, you, I'm, I'll be living at my house 16 years here, I'm, I'm going on third generation in this town. When I bought this house, I didn't plan on staying where I was at forever. I was gonna buy my house and flip it and, um, look for somewhere else, but after my wife and I got done remodeling it, that's where I wanna stay for the rest of my life. Um, I love this city, I love the people here, but there's, there's a lot more at stake than just the traffic that's coming through Fairview. Another thing that I'm heavily involved with is athletics out here. Our parks, our softball, our softball facility out here is, we're, we're at capacity, we've been at capacity for the last five to six years. Uh, Commissioner Johnson, he's out there 24/7, uh, Brandon, he's out there a lot, and I know Chris does a lot with the football, we got football teams practicing on softball and baseball fields right now. Oh, with us adding more population in here, I think we're somewhere close to about pre-approved units right now, about 3,000 units. Is, am I close on that, guys? Yep. So we've got 3,000 rooftops coming in already. Um, there is a couple of other issues that, that concern me on if this gets pushed through, the buffer zone. Is there any type of, is there, is there any way that we can, or the city can help fight for us a buffer zone between our lots and the development of that lot versus a 20-foot buffer zone?
What question you have?
I'm sorry?
A wider buffer zone?
A, a buffer zone around the perimeter, yes, or the adjoining properties.
Wider one, or a larger?
Or, or, yes, sir, some type of, some type of privacy fence, some type of privacy wall. 20-foot buffer zone is from here to Mayor Anderson, from me, basically. Um, that's not a lot, eh, I, I mean, you can have somebody looking over your shoulder in a heartbeat on a 20-foot buffer zone. Um, you know, right now, I mean, it's basically, what it's always been, it's been farmland around us right there. So this is, this is a whole new opposition of thinking of the quality of life at your personal property you have. Um, I know you guys were asking Craig, does this hit personally? Yeah, it does, it hits personally, hits personally to a bunch of us here, but in the same manner, we're also looking to you guys to be our voice for the type developments that come in here on top of us. Um, that high-density impact right there, I would, guys, if, if they were, if they were one-acre lots with nice houses there, you wouldn't even see me up here, I would, I'd be gung ho for it. But I really love the idea of that being a commercial property, because if I'm not mistaken, when that property was sold, was that property sold under a commercial zoning at the time?
It's zone commercial right now.
It's still commercial.
And, but as it, it was sold in, to the, to the new present owner, was it already commercial?
I don't know.
Mr. Tom, do you know that?
It's, it's commercial, and it's been, Patty? Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Um, so with that being commercial- Um, so with that being commercial, I, I, this is just me with my thoughts, thinking if this thing was bought commercial. Under the pretense, if I was gonna go buy a piece of land and I bought it, and I knew it was zoned for one, for one particular reason. And I bought it, and how many acres is on this, on this development over here?
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two acres. So if I was gonna go buy this and I had 52 acres to develop into commercial. And I knew I had wetlands and everything, but after I bought it, I was like, hmm, maybe I can't do 52 acres of commercial on this. What's my next step? It would just be, for, for me, if you wanted to cut down some of the lot sizes, cut down the density on it, do more commercial. Cause guys, there's not a lot of commercial left up and down highway. I mean, there's not a lot of properties left up and down Highway 100. Because let's face it, we're gonna have city center over here, but we're never gonna have city blocks broken out into Fairview right now. We're basically gonna be a strip. How much more property do we have up and down Highway 100 for good commercial development? And we got the school zone. Oh, that was the, that was another thing. I, I know y'all, people's already harped already on um, the traffic study with that. But I noticed on the traffic study, I believe that study was conducted back in May. Um, can anybody back me up on that? I'm sorry? May 14th, thank you. Um, a traffic study during school operations, I think would be great to see what that traffic study is. Cause we, you know, we already have tons of traffic going through the school zone, but a traffic study during school hours, after school hours. A week, I mean, that, that's gonna give us more of a solid baseline of information to, to go with. So, um, you guys know my concerns. This isn't my first time sitting up here talking to you guys. It's the traffic, it's the high density. But again, I just wanna thank you guys for the opportunity to get up here and speak. And um, you guys have any questions for me?
Well, Patty, could you answer to how many uh, permits have been pulled this year? Okay.
Um, and not necessarily just this year, Ms. Lisa, but total permits that's been pulled that are ready for development.
I think Brandon mentioned the last two years is a little over 100 per year. Is that correct?
Building permits, is that what you're saying? I think it's 130-ish.
Yeah, so we have about 100, a little over 100 a year.
130?
130 new homes or townhomes or. So those, those 3100 are, aren't all coming at one time?
No, no, and, and I know a bunch of those have been sitting on hold for quite some time, I think, correct?
Yeah, I mean, several of the developments that are going on right now, this board wasn't even here when they were approved.
Right. Well, and I'll leave it at this. That development that's coming in. I'm gonna say it like it is. It's mediocre at best. That's the way I feel about it. That's what a lot of people I've spoken to it about, it feels that it is mediocre at best. And us here at Fairview, if they're wanting to come in here and build here with us, let's set our sta, let's set our standards up high. Let's set our standards higher. Let's set our expectations high for what, what we're gonna allow in this city. And so I don't think that's too much to ask for. So, thank you for your time.
So far as building permits, 2021, 103, 2022, 76, 2023, 124, 2024, 103. Those are building permits that were pulled.
Okay. Thank you.
Chad, I, I wanna bring up something.
Go ahead, buddy.
With the commercial that is still proposed on the front of this project, how are you considering traffic into those areas? Versus if it was one, just say, what if the Walmart had gone there behind you instead of where it is? And all the traffic that would be coming in and out of that all day long?
Well, uh, with the amount of condos and townhomes in there, if people are living two or three times a day from the residence. You would think it would probably be a little bit less traffic than having that high density of a development of people coming in and out of there.
All right, so let's say this subdivision, we know what they're proposing currently. And of the commercial lots that are up front. That's been alluded to before, but no, we can't tell names of projects. There is an 8,000 square foot standalone restaurant that is looking to come. A hotel. And also, uh, a major chain grocery store on the front of this. So how would that compound your decision on what's going back behind it? Because here's the thing, none of those three come if that, if what's behind it doesn't come.
Me personally, I'd rather do without.
Okay.
Okay, so you're saying that you just like it, I'm, I just wanna make sure I understand, you'd like it to stay green? Just nothing built there at all?
No, ma'am. No, where, where did that come from?
No, I'm asking.
Oh, okay, no, ma'am.
You said nothing, so is that nothing at all, or?
No, if that was my, if that was my scenario, where I had to have, I had to have a development back there.
So if a development has to be back there, you, you would rather not have the commercial?
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
Because the center of town, what our uh, 2040 plan, which the citizens had many times to weigh in on that. The center of town was, what everybody wanted to see was walkability. And restaurants, retail, uh, multifamily mixed with single family homes where we could have walkability. Um, I, I'm gonna speak again to these, I, I get it, acre lots, but we're talking, to be realistic in Fairview. You buy an acre lot with a house on it, you're over a million dollars. That's just the way it is. And I spoke to this last time. I, I want my son, and I know other people want their children, to be able to choose when they come back from college or tech school or, or not even that, but want to live in our community, to be able to afford to live here. So I just, I guess I want to understand with the average house price being, I, I'm gonna be conservative and say half a million dollars on half acre lots and upwards of that on acre lots. How do we, you know, I, I would like people to weigh in on this. How do we?
Absolutely.
How do we do that and keep our, you know, our children able to live in their community, like you said, six generations? I, my son already has a, a job lined up here. But he can't afford something on a half acre, acre lot. He would have to stay living with me. And honestly, I couldn't afford something like that right now if I hadn't bought my house, you know, 20 years ago. So that's kind of where I would like some input as to how the community, like, you know, with this developer, we had two workshops and we invited the community. You say I'm your representative and these, this board is, but yet we had the two workshops so that the community could come in and talk to the developers and say, hey, this is what we'd like to see. And plus, when it started out, when this development started out, it was 456 non-retail apartments. We all said no. That's not what we want right there in our community. Then they came back with a straight zone. In a straight zone, we have no control over what goes in that straight zone. So we, this board told them, we wanna see, uh, they call it a pod, I call it a pud, whichever. Um, we want you to come back with a planned development for us to look at. So they went back and they changed it to a, um, a planned development where we have say over what goes on. But also we had the two workshops where we invited the community. We are your representatives, but you know, what better for us to do is have all of you here to speak to the developers and speak to our board to be able to know what everybody wants. And you know, I love for people, and I know this board too, to come talk to us and, and let us know, you know, how, how do we combat the issue of growing house prices and keeping our children to be able to live in their community? I just don't know the answer to that. And if somebody does, please enlighten me.
Mayor, I just add some notes while we talk about
Okay.
Um, housing options, housing affordability, attainable housing is a, is a constant discussion right now. There's roughly 2,700 approved to be developed lots. So that's on the books. There's, of that 2,700, 13, 1380 is single family. 1334 is townhomes and apartments. 965 towns, 369 apartments. So right now, we are 50/50 of towns, apartments with single family. This development would put us above more towns than future single family, just for consideration of options or product types.
Okay.
So if this gets pushed through, we're gonna have more apartment slash townhomes than basically what we do houses on the market right now.
Laid for the future to be built, correct?
Not rental, like, don't, don't assume that apartment means rental because we have a lot of townhomes that are for purchase.
But all due respect, at Bark East, with the way it's gonna be developed, all those are basically gonna have to be rentals, correct?
The way it's laid out right now, it will have to be rentals. If they choose in two years to come back and redo the plan to make them, uh, purchased uh, townhomes, then that would be what they would have to do.
But if, if the roads weren't to standard development roads, would they still be able to sell those?
Well, they wouldn't have already, it wouldn't have already been built yet. This, this isn't gonna like, we approve and, or disapprove or whatever and it'd be built tomorrow. That's not gonna happen. Most developments, look at the one behind Sonic. This board had nothing to do with that and I've been on the board for years. So it, it, it's like, it gets approved and then, you know, with everything they have to go through, it's a couple of years before it ever gets started. If they see the market, uh, at that time determines rentals or, and I'm, I'm not saying I'm for or against it, I'm just stating a fact. In two years, when they say this is gonna be the market saying rental or the market saying purchase. They determine at that time if they're gonna come back to the board with a new plan.
Okay. Um. All right. Well, thank you for your time.
Take it慢. I have begged them to make sure that they were sold, but they don't wanna answer me the other way.
But, but as submitted, it has to be rentals.
Yes, and I, I agree. I agree with my Vice Mayor Butler. As submitted, they have to be rentals. But they're they're retail rentals, not what they started out with. And I'm not saying that's good or bad, I'm just making a statement.
And Mayor Anderson, for, for me, what, what, what is retail rentals? What is that?
Market rate.
What, market rate? Okay.
2,000, 1,800 a month, something like that. That's what market rate right now on a, on a rental is.
Okay. Stuart, what, what's the, what's the average mortgage payment going on a house out here? Do you have any idea? I mean, I know you were in the.
I would say that now worth where rates are and where we currently half a million and up, I would say that we're, we're definitely over the $2,000 mark. If you got in back during COVID at two, 2%, 3%, you're in great shape.
Yeah. Don't refinance.
Definitely, definitely not.
So to break it down, like, if you buy a $300,000 home at current rates, it's over 2,000 a month. So that's a 3, because I just had somebody do that. That's the only reason I know the, the.
So basically the rule of thumb for every thou, 100,000, you're basically looking at 1,000 bucks on your mortgage?
15, 15.
Close to that?
Well, yeah, I, this was a $300,000 home at current rates and it was 2,200 a month on the, and that was with a down payment. You know, the required down payment and then um, their mortgage was around 2,200 a month.
HOAs and stuff get figured in as well. So some places happen, some places don't. They all range at different prices, so.
This was without an HOA.
I got you. And I guess my, my last question before I sit down is basically this, the two options that our city has for this development over here is we have to do some type of condo or some type of apartments. Because it's basically been the only thing that's been proposed at this time for that, that land over there.
Um, you mean for this property here?
Yes, ma'am.
So commercial, multifamily and single family, the transition?
Mm-hmm.
That's what's been proposed, the transition corridor?
Since I've been involved with it, Chad, answer your question exactly like she just said. It was proposed, it started apartments.
456 apartments.
We said no, and then it moved to, they wanted just a flat zoning where they could just put the apartments in there. Again, we said no. We wanted to be a pud. Now it's come back with all three phases in the same development. But just to, I, I, I'll say this, and for those that don't know, I've been on the board for 18 years. I served 16 years consecutively and then I've been on here for the last two years. Not one time have I ever voted for a development that people weren't against it. And I will say that there are people in this very room that live in the developments in the past that I have voted for that are now up here against future developments, presumably. I don't know that you are. I don't know exactly everybody that didn't speak. I don't know what reason you're against a development for. But I would like to know. So I would like for you to reach out to me. This developer has bent over backwards and done everything we've asked them to do. I'm not gonna sit here and tell you tonight that I'm still gonna vote for it. But when we've asked them to do something, they've, they went back to the drawing board and come back. I don't know that there's anything that they could present to us that everybody in this room would be happy with. Castleberry Farms, I feel is one of the greatest subdivisions we have in our city. And there's plenty of great subdivisions now. There were so many people at City Hall that night, they were in the parking lot. They couldn't all get inside the building. And look at how great a subdivision that is now, on half acre lots. And everybody was just in an uproar. So I'm gonna put some numbers for you together right now. And this is not demeaning for anybody because I respect everyone's opinion that's here right now. But less than 1% of Fairview's population is in this room right now. That means there's a possibility that the other 99% want this because they want the restaurant. They want the new grocery store. I'm not saying they all do. There's a lot of people that wouldn't come up here. If you paid them to come up here, they're not gonna come. But the ones that are here live the closest to it. Craig Cropper's exactly right. Craig Cropper has been here many times trying to get his property rezoned. He even met with a local developer in the last little bit about multifamily possibly going on his property. And he decided not to do that. And I respect him for that. It's his property if he wants to do it. Chad, you called me years ago asking me about rezoning your property. How many houses could you get on your property if you decided to do it? And you decided, no, I don't wanna do that. I wanna live here. And I respect that. But everybody has personal property rights. You don't want your neighbor telling you what you can and can't do with your property. And we as this commission up here, we have to take their rights into consideration as well. We can't just say that 100 people showed up out of 10,000 and we have to vote against it. No, we have to weigh all the options on whether or not they meet what we have set forth. And if they do, we're liable if we vote it down. And I don't mean just the city gets sued. We get sued individually. And that has happened before since I've been on this board. I have been sued individually over a subdivision. Now, it ended up getting thrown out, but we're ju, we're not just a representative of the city. We're, they can come and take our house where we live here in Fairview in doing this office. I don't know if the people that are here tonight that are running for office know that or not, but we're, we're in this liable as an individual.
Then one thing, our, our, um, our city planner, our city engineer, our codes department. They went through all of the regulations and the, everything before they, it came to us. And it came with a positive recommendation from our staff. I mean, are we supposed to say that our staff is wrong?
I, I will answer that. I will answer that, and it won't be the answer she's looking for, but if they are wrong, we need to know about it. That's, that's a fact. If they're wrong, we need to know about it. And hopefully, and whatever happens between now and the fifth, we'll get our answers.
So, so you guys can personally be sued?
Absolutely.
On a vote.
Yeah. I was told to protect my wife's inheritance, my children's inheritance, and my grandchildren's inheritance because they were coming after us big time personally. This was from our carrier, TML, up in the old city hall.
And it hadn't just been threats in the past, Chad. We have actually been named in lawsuits individually.
Yes.
Some have been settled and some have been withdrawn and/or thrown out.
And the twenty forty plan is, you know, being a guide, that's what it is. And it does need to be revisited when it, every couple of years or when it's supposed to be, but it is a guide. It's not the, it's not the law. So even if something that's brought to us with that twenty forty plan, it, it's not a law, and that leaves it open to interpretation to where if, if our city staff says we give a positive recommendation and then we go over everything, we have to make a determination. And, you know, there again, this developer, you know, he, they went from the four hundred and fifty six apartments. They went to straight zone. They've, we've asked them for a pod. They came back with that. We asked them to reduce lots. They've done that. We asked them to put a buffer around the whole entire property. They've done that. We've asked them to increase the, the driveways. They've done that. They're looking at reducing another amount of lots before they bring the final plan back to us for September fifth. I mean, you know, I'm not saying yes or no. I'm just saying that every time we ask them to do something, they have done it.
The buffer you spoke of, I'm gonna speak with them about because I do know that since this is a pod slash pod, whatever it's going under nowadays, we, we have the right as the city to say this is what we want. So that is a, I, I have no problem a- asking for that either. And just another, just another thing going back to how developments happen over the years, and everybody's referring to this as the Sullivan property. I don't know who here is your neighbors on your street and, and back behind it and whatnot, but your house, Mr. Claiborne Sullivan sold part of his property to build that for lots to be sold around that, or it would still be his farm all the way to the road. So that's how, that's how things happen. I know for a fact, when you bought that or anybody else that bought that, if you looked in the backyard before you signed the dotted line, you had to know at some point, something's gonna be there behind you. Whether you bought it and kept it from being built on or something, something was coming in the future. And granted, it's, it's been like that for a long time.
Right, and I, and I'm, I'm not against something being developed back there.
I know you're not.
So, but I want a smart growth development. The city deserves a smart growth development back there. That's all I got. Thank you, guys.
One more thing.
Yep.
Craig was out there the other day. I told him that I had to check with the attorney, and I did. Still got a couple more things I wanna discuss with him, but he advised me that you've got to vote on the project as submitted. And that's legal opinion, and that's his opinion right now. It may change by the fifth. I don't know. Not, not his opinion, but the, the project itself. I don't know. But hopefully that some of my input with him will help make the project better or hopefully we get some houses, I mean, some condos, whatever they call them, townhouses, a section of them sold where there won't be as many apartments. I don't, and see, that was the, the approach that White House took. But apparently somehow or another, White House got, got them where they were all sold. And of course, that would be a reduction into density because they would have to widen the roads, as we well know, in order to get to them and have to be curb and gutters and sidewalks, so that's more, more money for them to spend. But I personally think it would be a better project if it was done that way rather than rental. But, you know, I've been trying to put my input into it, but, you know, doing, trying to do the best I can to make it a good project for the city. And I would love to see it, a turning lane from where it ends at Walmart all the way to the school, into the schools and, and a red light at Cumberland one hundred, because I faced it every day myself. So I know what Ms. Andrews is talking about because I faced it every day. You're taking your life in your own hands when you turn left on, off of Cumberland to go to the dumpster or to stop and save or to the schools or anything. And I've lived here since nineteen eighty eight, and I've never lived either off of Crowcut, Old Franklin, or Cumberland. So I, I know when Cumberland wasn't Cumberland, it was Crowcut Southwest years ago. So that, and then I have, Dad has people that was born here in the eighteen hundreds. So my goal is to try to satisfy everybody I can with a project that comes before us. You know, so, and, you know, all I can do is try to do the best I can, you know, and that doesn't mean that I'm voting for it. I just mean that I'm trying to do the best I can. I'm still researching everything, and I'm still effect finding mission. So I'm still gonna try to find the best thing for it, you know. Now, whether they'll go for it or not, I don't know, but I'm, if I run into a roadblock, they won't get my vote.
Thank you, Mr. All.
Yes.
Just, just some continued discussion. Just some continued discussion on that mindset. I, I believe, I have nineteen pages of notes of things that I questioned from their submittal from a SubRex standpoint, a zoning ordinance standpoint, or a design review manual standpoint. I had about a five hour, four and a half hour meeting with our staff, and just last week, they sent some similar questions to the applicant that could have an impact on the plan or future plan overall, just for reference. So that was the discussion of, do we have questions or concerns? I certainly do.
Vice Mayor Butler, do you think that with what you brought to them, they will change their mind and give a negative recommendation for this plan?
In my opinion, I don't see how they can't. In my professional opinion, there's a lot of things that I think are questioning. The email that was sent to them referenced their concerns that the adherence of the applicable regulations may result in revisions to the master development plan that will require an amended master development plan to be submitted and approved in the same manner procedure as the current master development plan. So essentially, staff is saying some of the things that are missing could hinder what the future site plan would look like, and you may have to restart this whole process again. So in my opinion, yes, I'm, and, but I can't speak for what the staff would do.
Mayor, for me.
Yes.
So just sitting back and observing, we've had, the five of us have had quite a few conversations on this particular development, which I think is why some of you come up here and have some assumptions on how we are all feeling about it. But I just wanted to take this opportunity to address a couple of things. There, the citizens that have come up have taken notes here, and they all have themes. And then it'll kind of tie into what Commissioner Butler just made a point of. You know, you got questions on the traffic study. We got questions on the buffers. There's questions on the roads. One commissioner just stated that he's brought up with staff nineteen pages or nineteen different topics that he feels has issues. I can't help but think that, you know, there's two, there's two things that could be happening here. Worst case and, or best case scenario is they are meeting our regulations, but they're just doing it by this much, right? Just barely coming through, and it really comes down to the interpretation. Who's reading it? How do you interpret the regulation or the ordinance? And then citing on whether or not it's in line or is not. Worst case scenario is they're falling short by a mile, and unfortunately, either us, staff, or both are missing it, and we could end up with, with a terrible thing. So since it is a rezoning and we have the opportunity, there's regulations. I understand that we can all be sued. If I, if one of you brings something up here and say you wanna rezone your house, and I just look flat at you and say, I don't like you. The answer is no. Sure, you can sue me. But if I tell you, no, you're, there's regulations that we have to adhere to, and you're not in line with any of them, you can sue me, but you're not gonna win. You're not, it's not gonna go anywhere. So I just wonder why, why, if we are in, if, let's for the sake of argument, assume that this is the best case, we're in the best case scenario. They're barely meeting regulations. It's a pod. It's a rezoning. We can ask, give and take. Here's your traffic study. Here's the impact you're having on our community. Why not ask for the best? Why not try to get the absolute best product for the city of Fairview? I appreciate the applause, but that's not what I'm saying this for. I really, I really, I really do wonder why we don't ask for more. I, I think this development is, it's a big development. There's no question they're gonna make a ton of money off of it. Regardless if they have to reduce their housing by five percent or not, they're gonna make a killing on it, and they know that. And they should. I mean, that's what you do. You take a risk when you buy land and you develop it. It's not like it's just a guarantee that you're gonna make money. There's risks on their end. But as the city, they need us to do what they're gonna do. They can't go to the county and build it. There's not a, I mean, they're a massive company. They're doing this in other cities too, I'm sure, but this particular one, they need Fairview. So it's a partnership. It's just like there's other developments that came in the past that I said the same thing to. There needs to be a give and take to where we feel like we're getting something out of it. And as sweet as a turning lane is, I don't think that that's a fair trade off, in my opinion. I think that we should be able to request a little bit more, starting with the interior roads being to city design standards. To a couple of other points that were made, I understand that this developer originally brought a flat zoning in, and they wanted to do four hundred and something houses, and they've reduced it down to two hundred and something. But to be fair, that was a completely separate application. They could have showed up and said, we wanna put a high rise there and put two thousand apartments, and we say no to that. Do they get to now come in and say, hey, we originally wanted to do two thousand, but now we're only wanting to do two hundred and fifty? I mean, what they brought prior, in my opinion, is completely irrelevant. This is a whole new application. They knew from the get, in my opinion, that the flat zoning on that property was never gonna work. So I, for me, that, that, that argument doesn't really resonate. I guess that's everything. I just, I just wanted to, to express my concern with us settling and that I understand that, and to all you out here, there's gonna be a day, if I'm still up here when it comes, there'll be something presented on that property that it's gonna get a yes. I'm not opposed to something going there. I'm, I'm, you know, there's, that's another discussion, but that day will come. But I think it should be at least a product that the majority, and not all, to Stuart's point, there's nothing that we could put on that property that everyone's gonna love. But if the majority of people can at least appreciate it or find some value in it, that would be ideal. That's mine.
Who's next?
I'm Jessica Ford, seventy two oh eight Dogwood Drive in the city. A lot of my, what I was gonna say has already been said, so I'm gonna try to feed through it. I know that traffic has been taken care of. We can just skip all that. But also, I was wondering, I know that our schools are county schoo- I can't see through this. Can I hold this? Our schools are, are county schools, but I was wondering if the city does anything with the county to, I need to quit saying, um. So as our, as our roads continue to get more crowded, so will the schools. And so I was wondering, does the city and county collaborate on like a school impact study so that we can gain foresight on when our schools will reach capacity? And can we address that problem before it becomes one? We don't want our children's learning to be affected from overcrowded classrooms and overwhelmed teachers. Also, I didn't know if an environmental stud- like, I know that there's wetlands on this property, but then I've also heard that it was like a pond. So I didn't know if an environmental impact study would be something that could help us make a decision about this property. Could it harm, could developing harm the adjacent neighborhoods with flooding or pollution? Would erosion be a factor with clearing the land? And then also, this land is home to a lot of wildlife. I know that everybody who lives on Dogwood Drive with me is, knows that we have foxes and bats and owls and woodpeckers and, and I know that, that wildlife is gonna be displaced when growth and development occurs. But some, I think some of these animals are protected, and like migratory birds like woodpeckers, they, they come back every year to the same tree that they live in. So if you cut all their trees down and you displace these woodpeckers that are protected birds, what's gonna happen to them? And then a public works study, does this development like affect our city sewer systems, water systems, our power grid? Currently, my, my lights at my house and my neighbor's house flicker on and off all the time. I have to constantly reset my microwave and oven clocks, and I was just wondering if this development would, would cause that to happen more often. These were all questions that, that I had as far as that goes. The rest of my speech was basically talking about the twenty forty plan and which has, we've touched on, you know, the twenty forty plan says, you know, in existing neighborhoods, new developments around existing neighborhoods, twenty thousand square foot lots and multifamily residential developments in surrounding underdeveloped areas with the transitional, seem to fit better at, sorry, I lost my train of thought. Seem to fit better like around areas that are next to interchanges like eight forty. I think this development would actually be perfect out there. And then when I just heard that, it was like, you wanna put a grocery store, a restaurant, and a hotel, that's even more push to push something like that out there. I don't know why we would need a new grocery store. We have a Walmart, a Publix, and the Food Saver. That, to me, didn't make sense. A hotel would definitely be better out by eight forty. This isn't running as smoothly as I would like because I have to pick and choose. Everything's been said already.
You're not limited.
I know.
You just, you just say it.
I know, but I just don't wanna be repetitive. Let's see. Let's, okay, I'll go into talking about the development. The things that I, I didn't like about it. The roads in the development, obviously, we said aren't the city standard for roads. The alleyways were too narrow. I wanted to bring this up first and foremost because it's a safety issue. How are fire trucks supposed to navigate these tiny alleyways in the event of emergency fire? I mean, I know that it's big enough for a car to get through, but some fire trucks are relatively big, can't take, make, take, make sharp turns. Garbage trucks, I didn't know if there was gonna be like, if this would be a development where everybody sat out a trash can or if there was dumpsters, and then where would those dumpsters be located? They didn't, I didn't see any allocated space for them. They, of course, the multifamily development area will forever be a rental property because of the size of the roads. It can never be sold. The single family lots are too small, and they have front facing garages, which is something that goes against the twenty forty plan. There was also no area for a dog park. I know that, that the twenty forty plan says that some areas should, should have usable open space, and all I saw was the wetlands and the, the water feature. But for, to anybody who has ever lived in a townhome, and I, I have, I lived in Bellevue for seven years in townhomes, the only space you have that's grass is like this much space in between your sidewalk and your front door for your dogs. And it's, it's not enough, and with that many people concentrated in an area, you need a, you need a dog park for your pets, and especially with renters bringing up the fact that they don't take care and maintain their property as well as, as owners do, they're not gonna pick up their dog's business either. And then the buffer, like Chad said, it is, I brought. up their dog's business either. And then the buffer, like Chad said, it is, I brought a, brought a tape measure, because I was a, I'm a very visual person. You want to hold this one? My tape measure is 25 feet long, which is longer than the buffer. But this is 20 feet. Just so everybody knows, that's the, the distance that the buffer would be. And then the buffer, the buffer, for every 100 feet of the buffer is six trees. And that's roughly about every 16 feet, so this is 16 feet. He would be a tree, and I would be a tree. Then every alternating tree in that plan is an evergreen tree. The other tree is a canopy tree. So come wintertime, there's going to be some, some big holes in that buffer. Or I've been calling it the bluffer. All right. I'll wrap it up. I said I'll, I'll wrap it up, giving you some alternatives to think about. Some of these have already been said. Prime commercial real estate located on Highway 100 will eventually run out, especially if you keep putting residential on it. We're trying to preserve the face of Fairview, keep the small-town rural feel as you're driving through. But if we do build businesses first, they'll bring more revenue, more economic growth, because they pay more in taxes. More people will be willing to move to Fairview if there are more attractive businesses. This, like I said before, this development would be great if it was located somewhere else. These single-family lots would be some of the smallest to be approved in recent history. We shouldn't put two high-density developments on the same road one mile from each other, because we do have this wonderful big town center that we're putting in, that it basically is the same amount of single-family homes and townhomes with the addition of apartments as well. And we, we shouldn't put two high-density develops on the same road, because we want to keep that town center the main focus of the town. Like, we don't want to have competing, and then add, you know, the exact same amount of traffic less than a mile from each other. So do the, do the numbers, overall character of this development doesn't really match with the intent of the 2040 Plan, or I don't think it does. And just in closing, I, I'd just like to remind you all that you are elected officials from the people of Fairview, and they've chosen you to be their voice, and we hope that you've heard us tonight.
You have one more thing. And this was just, I just jotted this down as a note. My grandmother lives in Peryor, Tennessee. I don't know if you all know where that is.
In where?
Peryor. It's north of Paris. It's, it's almost to the Kentucky state line. And when we were talking about the number of houses needed to expand the highway, that Peryor is on 641 Highway, Highway 641, and it goes to Paris, Tennessee. Well, Peryor has a, a population of 705, and Paris is 10,339. And they're widening Highway 641 all the way from Peryor to Paris. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Hi, I'm Ray Goodman. I live in McCormick Grove. We, we are in the city of Fairview. We bought our home because we saw it as an, Fairview's an extension of Leapers Fork. We did our research. It took us two years to decide on what we wanted to move. We heard about the police response time, the fire response time. Those were very attractive things for us. We invested a ton of money in our home. This is our investment, is Fairview. We, I read an article where that a community had gotten together, they were going to do a development. The community came together, and the council, the commission voted against it, because that's what the community wanted. That was very attractive to us. We were very concerned about the area we were in, because it was close to Bellevue. Bellevue is a case study in what you do not want in Fairview. There's so much crime now. It went from a bedroom community to more apartments than homes. The people are, it's crime-riddled. Kids are shooting each other in Red Caboose Park. We are very busy people. My husband doesn't have time to be here tonight. When we were talked to about, well, people didn't show up. People are working. They have football games. They have other things. I knew nothing about this development, nothing. I saw a little sign on Cumberland Road that got removed about this. That's why I'm here tonight. We knew nothing about it. Texted my neighbor last night and said, "Somebody I've seen twice," my neighbor. We're very private people. And I said to him, "Do you know about this?" And he goes, "No, this is horrible." And I looked around, and I saw him here tonight. So people are not here tonight, because it's Labor Day week. They don't know about it. Their lives are stressed. And this is something that I don't think the people want. They don't want another Bellevue. The police can't handle it. It's crime-riddled. We want our police taken care of here. That was the draw for us, to put the amount of money we put into our home here. We love the community here. We went to Jefferson's. We sat down. We had dinner. We saw kids from baseball games there, and families. And it was a, a bedroom community. Talk about your son, you want him to come back and be able to afford. Well, there's four apartment complexes. There's HUD homes on Horn Tavern. There's a trailer park. My son's not going to come out of college and be in a nice apartment. He's going to have to do like I did. You start low, and you work your way up to a house. That's my expectation for him, is to be able to afford a home here in Fairview. Save up, buy a home in Fairview, because it is a bedroom community. I was sitting back here, listening to all the apartments that have been approved, and I'm horrified of what we've done. It's, it horrifies me of what's going to happen to the, to the police department. I mean, because as planning commissioners, they don't put the police in first. It's kind of like you said, you have to have disaster, and then they put more police in. So it's very concerning of the safety of our fire and rescue, the safety of our police. You guys have such an opportunity. I can't tell you the responsibility you have. You could make this such a beautiful place, because that's what we were attracted to. The canopy of trees, the wildlife. You have Bowie Nature Center. Don't let an apartment complex come in here on the very basics. Think of West Haven. Think of something beautiful. Make them make it pretty. Make them attractive. Take care of your community. I might be naive, but when I read that article that the commissioners did vote something down because the people didn't want it, that made me want to move to Fairview. And wanting to invest the amount of money we invested into Fairview. It's, it's a beautiful community, and please don't mess it up. Don't, it's like you said, our standards should be up here, because people are coming out here. It's a beautiful place to live. So don't just let people come in. I mean, when you have rental property, these people are not invested. They can be in and out of those apartments in three months. They don't have thousands of dollars, or hundreds of thousands of dollars, invested in those homes. These are renters. They have friends coming in. They have people that cause crime. I mean, sex offenders. I mean, what all are you going to be dealing with when you're having another, another apartment? Because there's plenty of apartments here. Just know that we love Fairview. We wanted to be here. We loved what you have. Don't mess it up. Don't mess up the police department. Don't mess up our fire and rescue. We wanted the fast-response time. We wanted these things as we're getting older, to be there for us. And it can be a beautiful place. And y'all are on the, the cusp of something wonderful, because the development is happening. It is going to happen out here. I mean, there's no place else for Williamson County to go. So you guys are on the cusp of doing something beautiful for this community. So don't put the bar down here. Put it up here. That developer's going to pay to make it pretty, if he wants to be in here and be part of our community. It should have been homes, you know? It could have been homes that they were buying down homes, but it's not now. So we didn't know about this, so the community should not be blamed for not being here tonight, because people didn't know. I didn't know. My neighbor didn't know. We don't stay on Facebook. That's not our thing. So I didn't get a mailing. I, I, I don't know how all this went by without us knowing about it. So it's, it's very naive, but I did think that you guys would take care of the citizens and not take care of a developer. That's what we want in this community, is that we know that when my husband's too busy working, or I'm busy, that you guys are working to protect us. You know, y'all are there to say, "This is awful for our community. That doesn't look like what we want." All these points have been brought up, and crime hasn't even been talked about. Bellevue is not the model that we want, because we lived in Bellevue at one point. And it was a beautiful bedroom community. It's not that anymore. It's not that anymore at all. It's more apartments, which bring in more transient people that are in and out, so they don't care. So, and it's hard on the police department. It's hard on the fire department. So please, just take this very seriously about how this development goes, because I'm sitting back there going, thinking, what have we done? What have we done with our nest egg that we put into this community? If, if you guys aren't going to protect us, who is? You know, we don't have the power as individuals to do this. We really, really need y'all to stand up for us, and take care of this community, and make it beautiful, because that's what it is. The nature here is just gorgeous. That's what drew us here. And it, it can be, I mean, Pinewood Road, you're looking at Leapers Fork. You're looking at a beautiful, beautiful situation here, but take care of it, you know? And it is concerning about when you drive down 100, and they've taken all those trees out. I don't know what the, I don't, went in on that. I don't know if they're going to put more trees at the front edge of it to make it look pretty again. I don't know. But I know how horrible it looks now, you know? And so, please, please, just take care of our, your citizens. And we're not. There's so many that aren't here because they don't know. They don't know. They can't be here because they have other responsibilities, even if they know. So that's all I'm asking. Just please, just take care of us.
So I'm really concerned if people are not finding out about the, how many, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 meetings we've already had about this project. We need to start spreading the word, I guess. Because the thing about it is, it's on our Fairview webs, our Fairview Facebook page, and if you're not looking at that, then we need to make sure that our, you know, our friends and neighbors are finding out about this, because we've had two workshops on this development. We've had two planning commission meetings, and one board meeting already. So if people are not finding out, then we've got to do better as a, a community, where if their people aren't on Facebook, we need to share this, because that's-
The mailing thing?
Well, that would cost tax dollars, like every, every-
How about a bigger-
Well, you do get a letter if you're adjacent, and I'm thinking that the, the sign you saw is for probably a different development, because this one's not on Cumberland.
This was like somebody's dog out there.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So you're saying that, like at Craig Cropper's house, he hung a sign that said, "No apartment complex across the street." Well, these aren't apartments. They're, they're townhomes. So we didn't, we didn't approve the 456 apartments. And then, just to say, because this, you know, I'm trying to answer questions. We have, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4. We have four apartment complexes that are low-income. And unfortunately, when our kids come out of college, they don't meet the requirements for those apartment complexes. You have to make below, and it's quite low, amount of money to be approved for those apartments. We, we don't have an inventory of retail rentals that our children can afford, and also be approved for. So I'm just, I mean, I'm just putting that out there. My son is coming out of school, making above the amount that he could be approved for one of these apartment complexes. So he cannot live in one of those.
With his wife?
With his wife? Get a roommate?
No, it's in that office.
Yeah, that's right. And so they don't get, they're not qualified for these apartments, because his income alone is too, is too high to be approved. So that's, you know, that's just what I'm asking, is like some ideas of, you know, people who are in that situation.
I've got a couple of questions.
I can't hear you. Please come to the mic.
Fred Rosenberg. I live at 7454 Cox Pike. And I am concerned about good development. So I don't live near where this Cumberland thing is happening, but I am concerned about it. But a couple of things I noticed. One, on the buffer zone. An adequate buffer zone, and I was in planning, would be a 25 to 30-foot buffer with a 5 to 1 berm with landscaping on it. So you have a visual and a sound barrier. Okay, just a suggestion. Another suggestion is about the communications. Why not go to Publix, Walmart, and Food Saver, and have a bulletin board for the city, put up there, and, and post what's happening in the city? Everybody goes to food stores. So it'd be an easy, inexpensive means of communicating to the public. Of course, you still have to do the Facebook and any other type of sites. So those are the three things that I like to talk, wanted to talk about, and I think it's great that these people came out. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Denyste Freese. I live at 7314 Dogwood Drive. I do live in the city. One of the things that I have not heard addressed, and I appreciate everybody's comments, they've brought up everything that I was concerned with, with the exception of, with all of this high-density housing, and the amount of land that is going to be covered by the houses, the roads, and all this, the wetlands have, I haven't seen the plans, nothing big enough anyway to really tell what it is. Is there any mitigation in there for flooding with all of this stormwater that's not going to be able to soak into the ground? Or is it just going to wash down and cross Glen Haven, or should I say, back up and then go over the road at Glen Haven, right there in that low dip? You know, I know you've improved that, but you know, it still tends to collect a lot of water there when we get heavy rains.
We have a stormwater ordinance that we adopted even before we were required to do so according to our population. So, you know, speaking to the wetlands and flooding with our stormwater ordinance, and also with TDEC, before this can even be built, TDEC has to approve all of that. And also, they have to meet our stormwater ordinance. We don't, we adopted that so that our neighbors in developments will be protected.
I, I didn't, I just, the plan I saw was smaller than that, and, you know, you couldn't really tell what, what they had on there for the wetlands, is whether they were just leaving it as is, or if they were doing any flood mitigation on there.
They're under the rule of TDEC?
I know. I, I will take a picture of that and-
Okay. And also, I mean, it's, that plan is online. If, if you do that, and I, I don't know if you're able to enlarge it, but you can kind of enlarge it and look at different sections. That was just the largest piece of paper I had, and I filled it. So.
And I will say this about the Facebook. There are a lot of, you know, I manage an IT department for the state, and I do not do Facebook, because of- IT department for the state, and I do not do Facebook because of privacy and security concerns. One of the things, anytime somebody offers you a service for free, it's because you are the product. And so, as an IT professional, I have no part of any type of social media. So, I did not find out about this until approximately about a week or so ago, when one of my neighbors came by.
Well, I will definitely take that suggestion, talk to Walmart, whoever made that suggestion, and see if we can't put some information about the, you know, our meetings and different things going on, because that's a good idea. You know, I, I guess everybody here probably visits Walmart every once in a while, so we could probably, you know, they have those bulletin boards up front when you, when you check out, and if they would agree, we could have something for the city to where, you know, if people don't use Facebook, we could put information about our meetings, and then you can see what's being discussed.
And I will, I do agree with you that, you know, we do need commercial rentals here. Years ago, when my daughter and son-in-law got married, they eventually got into a townhouse over here across from Tractor Supply, but like I said, they could not qualify for any of the apartments or anything, and, you know, newly married couple, just starting out, it was difficult for them to find something. So, I, I do agree with that. Just not sure about the density going into this particular area. And as far as wanting, I appreciate Mr. Hall and wanting them to sell some of them, but I kind of think that's probably an unrealistic expectation, even though, you know, the Fed's going to pivot next month, and interest rates are going to start dropping. When you've got 60% of your people living in this country that are behind on credit card bills and other bills, nobody's going to be able to qualify for these mortgages once they, or once the interest rates come down anyway. So, I think once a rental, always a rental.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Who's next?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and hello. My name is Don Buffalini, 4010 Brazelton Way, Fairview, I live in the city. I am running for city commission, and I am willing to be sued to have everybody voice their opinions. I'm sorry, honey, I apologize about that. Originally from New York, served as a firefighter, responded to 9/11, so I know about congestion, I know about what these gentlemen are going to be going through, I know what our fire department's going to go through, and I understand that we're building an additional fire department as well. I currently am a project manager, I do work in Nashville, married to an amazing woman, Deborah, who teaches in Williamson County. Together, we have five okay children. I added that okay, I'm sorry. As a family, we moved here to Fairview to escape the challenges we were facing back in New York. The cost of living was skyrocketing, and the overall quality of life was deteriorating. After visiting many towns here in middle Tennessee, we fell in love with Fairview. I had my job first, but we had no place to live. We still had a house up in Long Island, and one thing that we did was we spoke with a real estate agent, and they took us to Fairview the first time, and it was probably the only place that we should have looked at. We wound up looking at about six or seven other towns, and we said, "You know what? Fairview's where we want to be." Fairview is just, it's just a beautiful place, everything about it, and we moved here to invest ourselves wholeheartedly. Fairview is growing rapidly, we need a careful consideration of what we're approving as a city, especially when it comes to residential developments. We already have approved 3,115 new construction units. Approved, not permitted. However, that will be coming shortly, in which 384 have been built thus far, with about 15 more to be built by the end of this month in Cumberland Estates where we live now. In the next five years to 10 years, how many residents will be added to our city along with their vehicles, on top of the 3,554 dwellings that are in existence right now, and 9,357 residents as per the 2020 census? We're all experiencing the traffic, I do it every morning, I'm sure everybody else does as well. I feel that we need to work a little more closely with the planning commission. I also, one of my questions is, why do we have commissioners and a mayor on the planning commission, on the planning board? It's an honest question, I don't, I want, I think we should all understand that. While we have a very strong 2040 plan, I feel like everything we're trying to do is being implemented in the first five years, rather than the 20 years that it was implemented and designed for. They say that it's supposed to be revisited every two to five years. Now, the question is, when will we revisit this plan? Where will the kids play? Where will the sporting athletics be? Because right now, we have a softball field that a lot of us have been there and volunteered at, and, you know, it, it's a beautiful park, and the crutches do an amazing job with it. But, to my understanding, there's a gentleman that lives in Fairview that would like to donate $10 million. $10 million that he'd like to donate for a sports facility. You look very confused, like you don't know what I'm talking about. You might not know what I'm talking about. This money was offered to Williamson County, but the stipulation is that he invests it in Fairview. Williamson County said, "No, it gets distributed throughout Williamson County." Is there a way, another question, that he can donate it to the city of Fairview, and the city of Fairview build a sports facility, rather than using Williamson County? I don't know the rules to that, perhaps you guys can enlighten us about that. Let us focus on the future of the community. Fairview is an amazing place to live and raise a family, and with your support, everybody here, and up on this, on, on our dais right now, we can make it even better than it is now, honestly. You know, I, I can't, I can't speak to being right directly behind here, behind the development that's going to be built. I do think it's a good idea, however, I think it's a bad spot for it. This development should be built up by the interstate. Keep the traffic away, and yet, they still will utilize our retail locations. They also, you also mentioned, if we build this, they're going to bring a hotel in, or a, let's say, Texas Roadhouse, or I don't know, anything else. Is that hotel going to be built on 100, or is it going to be built by 840, or is it going to be built by 40? Is that a stipulation for a hotel to come in here, is that we have to have the population? You know, it, it, it's crucial that we stop and think about what we're adding here. If we add all of these 3,000 already approved dwellings in these, and apartments, to the already 3,554 that we have now, you're talking about, probably about 15,000 people living in Fairview. I mean, I, I'm not one to, I don't want to quote numbers, this is just a guesstimate. So, please don't hold me to that or anything like that. Another thing, you know, off, off my little speech that I was writing, I want to thank everybody for coming out here tonight, I know a lot of people left. I like the red shirts. I noticed our mayor is wearing a red shirt. So, thank you very much for whatever support that is for our mayor. But, like I said, I just want to let everyone know that if I am elected as a, as a board member for one of the two empty seats that will be coming up, I'm willing to listen to each and every one of you, whether you're in the city or outside of the city as well. Because we have to listen to those people outside the city, because everything we do in the city will inadvertently affect them as well. Thank you.
So, we, we do encourage people, I just, I like to know, and I like, I've been told that people want to know if people live in the county or the city, but I've never stopped anyone from speaking. I want to hear from everyone. So, whether you live in the city, or the county, or, you know, wherever, it's, you know, I mean, our town halls are open, our citizen comments are open, we have public hearings, and no one has ever on this board said, "We don't want, we want to keep this," you know, if they don't live in Fairview, we want to keep them out. That's not what we're about. And also, the charter sets up how our boards are set up. We don't do that on our own. So, our charter, and also, I'm sure that Tom is looking into setting up a commissioner camp, where the people who are running will know exactly how things are set up, how things are run, how you're supposed to act in meetings. That will, it being a commissioner camp, I'm sure that will come up for, you know, people who are running, and also, you know, more towards the election. But our, our charter does set up that we have to have the mayor and one of our appointed board members sit on the planning commission. So, just to answer that question. Who's next?
Mayor, just real quick on, I'm sorry, Carolyn, just real quick on the note, we keep asking, "When will the 2040 plan be revisited?" Well, may, maybe not soon enough. We have recently engaged for a complete zoning ordinance overhaul with TPUDC, which is a local firm, and in conjunction with that, they brought in Common Ground. Common Ground is the group who created the 2040 plan. So, in conjunction with the zoning ordinance overhaul, they'll be revisiting the 2040 plan to kind of manipulate or create together. And TPUDC has created zoning ordinances in communities, municipalities all around us. Some of the cities that were engaged with them to create, to rewrite the zoning ordinance, had them review plans along the way, when put summittals or pot summittals came in front. I don't think we're far enough along to have asked that yet, but I don't know that any of the zoning ordinances they've, they've written would allow, or would be favorable to what's been submitted to the project we've been discussing some tonight, just for feedback. But, the zoning ordinance is, is critical, and, and long overdue, and going to be huge for Fairview that we're just kind of about to start to kick off. It'll have a lot of community engagement and similar to the 2040 plan, so, just to touch on that.
Thank you. I'm Carolyn Roberts, 7123 Donald Wilson Drive, and I live in the city. And I'm going to take this off, because I saw what everybody else has been dealing with. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but while this was going on, I had some questions that came up, and it seemed like the right time to ask, and so, thought I would just ask. And I've got one recommendation, so I'll lead off with that. Perhaps a digital sign that could advertise the meetings, and that would be maybe prominently located in, like, in front of City Hall, but maybe on 100, if that's possible. That might, that might help, because it does seem like a lot of people are not on social media, or like, they're not checking it during the workday or something. So, just a thought there. And then, Commissioner Butler, with the TPUDC review that you just mentioned, what's the timeline for that?
I believe our planning staff had initial preliminary meeting within the last two to three weeks, and they're working on starting that timeline, where they'll have community meetings, planning commissioner meetings, board of commissioner meetings. So, it should be firing up, we should be hearing something about it soon. Do you have any reference on it? Okay. Yep, and it's a, it's like a year to 18-month process, so it's a long process, but it should be kicking off soon, we should be seeing those announced soon.
Great, yeah, long and thorough, we all hope. Okay, so here are some questions for you, and these may not be things you can answer tonight, but I hope so, and, and actually, I also want to say thank you so much. I know it's hard to get peppered with questions after a, a long day, and everyone here's had a long day, so I'll try to make this quick, but, but I do appreciate what you're doing. So, there's a difference, I'm wondering, this is a question, is there a difference in taxes for single-family homes versus apartments versus townhomes? So, I guess the question I'm really asking is, does the city stand to profit more in the tax base, depending on what kind of residential buildings are put on a property?
The answer would be yes and no. It would be yes and no, and disposable income of the residents would be even more so. Someone, someone that comes in and buys a million-dollar home has more money to spend, presumably, out throughout the city at different restaurants, or shopping, or anything. So, if you're speaking just of the tax dollars that we get in property taxes off of a commercial business versus residential, there are different, different scales at what that comes to, and I couldn't tell you exactly where the breakdown would be, but that, those numbers could be, city staff could get that to you.
I think that would be good to know. What do we stand to gain? So, if we're talking about the idea of having apartments, and I think we've all agreed with it, you know, you, you either have to buy a home, or rent a house, or the apartments only have certain qualifying factors, and, and that's no secret, that may be, it would be helpful for us to be able to identify what's the benefit to the city if we do build apartments or townhomes. It's just, it's just a thought, it might help with that understanding. I'm having a very hard time understanding this Northwest Highway connector. How does it connect from 100 to 96? Like, I don't, I don't know where the connecting points are, I'm sorry?
Crowcut. So, 100, you go down Crowcut, and it connects to Northwest, and it goes all the way out to 96. Does that make sense?
Dice Lamplie.
Well, okay.
At the split at Dice Lamplie, you take Dice Lamplie to Northwest Highway.
Okay, so like at that funny intersection, where you curve all around, you go crazy, and then you cross over Cox Pike?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Does everybody follow that? You understand, you go crazy at the intersection? Okay. Yeah, that, because that's a wild one, too. You got to make sure you look. Okay. And, and is that property already, like, acquired or approved, or would that connector require a lot of, I guess, getting the land from private owners right now?
Well, it's already there, it's already, it's already a through-street, it's just in the areas of development, it's going to be expanded and widened, and sidewalks and curbing.
The developers throughout are, we're each taking a part. The city has a part, one developer has a part, another developer has a part, up to 96.
From, from what point?
From 96 to, I, I call it Crowcut, but I guess that, that triangle.
It's down, it would be down Dice Lamplie to the end of the development, I suppose.
So, then, when you get...
Not all the way to Cox Pike.
Right, okay, so then, when you get past that, then how does, how does that work? Going past those neighborhoods and those big high hills, and then you come up to Cox Pike, and then you go all the way around that little bridge? I mean, what, what's the plan for that land? Is that privately owned right now?
I would say every bit of that is privately owned, unless there's, until you get to the area where the city park is.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And is there a timeline for that connector? No?
Just to add content, it kind of goes back to where we, sorry, where, where we started the beginning, if a major thoroughfare plan or a major study was created or implemented, we could identify these areas, and so, as project summittals come in, we can say, "You do, you need to make this improvement, or you need to make this connection for future connection piece." Just that comment reference.
I think, I think it's maybe misunderstood, and I don't think the mayor actually meant a connector all the way to 100.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I didn't mean a connector all the, I meant it, the connection will be, it, it will be an alternate route that would allow people to go that route to 100, I mean, to 96, and alleviate some of the traffic on 100.
Through road improvements.
Yes, through road improvements that are in that area.
It's all existing roads.
Okay, okay, so, so, sorry, and I know everyone's probably really tired, I just really want to make sure that we understand this. So, if I'm on Crowcut, and I, I've just leapfrogged across 100, and I'm driving up Crowcut, and I'm heading towards Dice Lamplie, so that's still two lanes, until you get all the way around, cross over Cox Pike, and then you go up and down the big hills, and when you get to where Belvoir is planned, then it winds up into three lanes. Okay. And then that goes to 96, and there's a light. And that's the picture, okay. So, I've heard this in a couple of meetings, and I just wasn't sure. Commissioner Butler, yes?
Thank you, sorry. Thank you for asking this question. Our planning staff, just to show their dedication and commitment, are watching at home right now. He just sent me a public kickoff event notice for the start of the zoning ordinance overhaul, so September 11th at 6:30 here at City Hall. So, that will kick off the Zone Fairview Development Code, so the kickoff of the new zoning ordinance. Thank you for asking that question, he sent it to me.
Well, thank you so much. Well, thank you so much. I can't see you, but thank you. That's really helpful. Thanks. They've been so responsive. It's been great. Okay, to Bark East, real quick. Help me remember, how many units are approved right now? And then, just, all kinds, what's the total unit?
Approved?
Yes.
Zero.
Okay. How many are proposed? That's what I mean. I'm so sorry. How many are proposed in the
Brandon's got it.
He'll bring it up for you. It's a little over 200.
234, I believe.
I had 237 in my head, so we're, we're right close, Commissioner. Oh, that's right. Okay, all right. So, right around there, 237. And my question is about this, this restaurant, hotel, commercial use. There was something that was said in this meeting that I found very interesting, that the restaurant will not come without these developments, without these units. And something I've heard in conversations is that we can't get sit-down restaurants in Fairview because we don't have the rooftops. And you're telling me that 237 units, several of which share the same rooftop, are going to make the difference for an 8,000-square-foot restaurant? I, I, I'm just finding this remarkable. I'm, I don't know. It's, it's really a question.
Let me, let me just put that in perspective. When Caspian Hills, which, that was my property, so I know the whole backstory on that, we were looking at having the Bowie Commons, which is where Publix and all of that is, okay? The restaurants, retail, grocery store. They said without those 88 units that are on that property, they would not come. I'm like, okay, so 88 units, 88 rooftops, determined if Publix was going to be here. So, I don't know how they figure it all out, but that, that, that's a true statement.
Just to add to that, I, personally, I mean, at, at the, at the end of the day, it's just a privately-owned business, is a restaurant. So, if you did your own market research, and you felt that we could sustain your restaurant, and you would be successful, you do it. And there's no, now, corporations that are, you know, the same restaurant, like a McDonald's and stuff, I'm sure they have criteria that you would have to specifically check in order for them to consider you. But there's no requirement for any of that, right? I mean, for a hotel, a restaurant, now, if that restaurant's tied to the developer, and they're part of the package deal, that could be, but I mean, maybe they feel our market is that close, which could have been back then, too. They could have just felt like you're right on the cusp, and you, you, you know, you're 80, you're going to add 150 people or so, and that's going to be enough. But to answer that question, at the end of the day, there's really no magic number. I mean, it's just, does somebody feel like investing their hard-earned money into a business and think it'd be successful or not?
And I thi, I think that's a good point, Commissioner McDonald, absolutely. I, and I like that, and, and, and it makes sense. My concern, and the reason why I'm asking this, is I don't know how committed this restaurant is, and if we are absorbing 237 more dwelling units, and they decide not to come, then we still don't have the restaurant, but we have 237 more dwelling units, with times two the cars, in no intersection being built, which actually takes me to my next question. So, the light at Cumberland, if I understand correctly, and please do correct me if I'm wrong, the conversations and like the real planning are supposed to start in May of 2025, which is next May. And then groundbreaking was supposed to be the May following that, so that's May 2026. And that would take several months, if I'm not incorrect. And in the, I think it was the July 9th meeting with the Bark East developers, they, they asserted a pretty aggressive schedule for getting started on that development, and the first units would actually be livable before ground's even broken for that light at Cumberland, Crowcut, and 100. So, it's kind of a question, am I, am I right about that? Because we're going to have these units with the construction traffic and the cars, but we won't have a light yet at an intersection that is already pretty troublesome.
The meeting that Patty and I had with TDOT, and there was seven members here, they said that the longest wait time is due to the, the actual polls. And it determines if the, the length of time is shortened, if we get the polls faster, or lengthened, if it takes up to about eight months, but it could be shorter. They told us in that meeting that we're looking at fall of '26 for the completion.
Okay, thank you.
But if we get the polls faster, but it could take up to eight months for the polls, which would put us fall of '26.
Mayor, do you know when you get a commitment for that? Like, when you would know more, like, more surely?
I don't know about the eight-month thing, because they said that the, they just can't determine. It, it's like anything right now, if it's something like polls, or, you know, different, I don't know, I've heard this, you know, different materials that people need to build things, it's just taking a while right now because of the manufacturing. But they said the length of time, eight months, would be the most, and that would put us at fall of '26.
Thank you.
And I, and I think that May 25 is the date that goes out for bid. And so, when that, I think that bid process should have some kind of timeline attached to it. So, hopefully, in '25, you hear a timeline. The city center developer told us it would take over a year to get their light, that they were ordering it right as they were starting to turn dirt to try and get it in here in time. So, you never know.
Okay. Thank, thank you very much, Commissioner. I'm, I'm going to skip a question or two, because I hear some people sighing behind me. I know we're all tired. And I just, I've, I've got two other questions I want to ask then, or just one. This'll be the last one. The 2040 plan, as we understand it, and was said earlier tonight, it's not legally binding. So, it's, it's a recommendation, and we can go, and we can change it, and we can revisit it. We've talked about that. But that means it's not legally binding on either side, right? So, like, we can't sue anybody over the 2040 plan if they go outside of it somehow, and we can't be sued if we don't honor it, right? Like, is, does it go both ways that it's not legally binding?
The 2040 plan's a guide.
Yeah, it's not part of our adopted ordinances. I mean, I, I tell citizens, it's like, if you're go, if you're going on a, on vacation, driving in your car, let's assume there's not a cellphone that you can put your destination in. But you would have a, an idea of the roadways you were going to take to, to get to where you wanted to go. Now, along those roadways, you could say, hey, we heard of a restaurant 10 miles south of our highway that we're on, and we're going to go out of way and get that, but we're going to come back to the, to the route that we had planned. And I think that's kind of how the 20, in my mind, how the 2040 plan works. At the end of the day, it, it's, it's a, it's a guide to get us to where we want to be, but by no means do you have to follow it, you know, to the T. Now, the closer you stick to it, you know, the closer you're going to get to that, what was originally designed for. But that's a, that's the analogy I give for it to citizens.
Thank you, yeah. So, so for us, we can deviate from it, and the developers don't rely on it in a, in a sort of legal way. It would be zoning that's relied on.
I would say that they definitely understand that they have a better shot of getting a rezoning approved if they're in line with that, but by no means do they necessarily have to.
Thank you, Commissioner McDonald. And I don't know if I can go, if you all had questions for me, but y'all said we should wait up here for questions, so.
Did you get your questions answered?
I did, thank you. Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Do I have to hold it? Oh, God.
I know, I'm sorry then.
I really, I really don't want to hold it, okay. So, I had questions about, I, I live at 7118 Pleasant Grove Court. I'm in the city. So, I had questions about Cumberland, that intersection, because you just mentioned the dates on it. Are you definite on putting traffic lights there? Have you considered roundabouts?
I'm sorry, say it again, traffic lights or what?
Roundabouts.
A roundabout on the highway?
Yes. It's only 40 miles an hour here, and it's 35 right there. It's not, you're not, it's not 50.
That's a school zone. I don't know if the buses would, I, I just, I don't know if that would-
Either way, it'd be a state thing, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the TDOT engineered plans have traffic, has a, a turn signal in both directions, and it has a traffic signal as well. It also includes some grading measures on either side for line of sight to, to clear up.
I understand.
But the state designed it, their engineers designed it.
I'm, I would rec, I would suggest then, or ask, that you consider a roundabout. Because it, I, I traveled through these when I was in Arizona recently, and on highways, and in major cities. And it was actually really nice. It keeps traffic flowing, it's safe, they don't have, you can't, you cannot run a roundabout. So, you cannot power through that thing unless you're going to wreck, so.
We were told years ago, roundabout was completely out. They wouldn't even consider it. And I only, and I only know that because I was the mayor when this building was built, and I wanted to build it in the middle of the road out there, like a square, and go around it. And they told us absolutely not.
I'll have to see what I can do about that.
I was, excuse me, ma'am.
Yes.
I was actually in a two-day school on roundabout several years ago, with another coach director that I had at the time. And they are the safest way at an intersection. And one of our areas that was considered at the time was Highway 109, which was one of the top 10 most dangerous highways in the United States. And they were going through some roundabouts there. And when I tried to get one in a project here, I got shot down because I suggested a roundabout inside of a subdivision, which would slow the traffic down in a long stretch of road. So, basically, now they want to put stop signs, you know, to slow the traffic down in a subdivision. But roundabout is the safest way that there is to slow the traffic down. And I do appreciate you bringing it up. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. And I will try and look into this more to see if I can find loopholes. On the counts, these are the, the housing counts, I did find something on the USDOT that a project is designated as urban if it has near the boundary, or in, within a U, 2020 designated urban area of 200,000 or more population. So, that's what it's from the USDOT that they designated that, as an urban project. But it's not necessarily, urban areas are designated as like 5,000 and above, but for a urban project for the USDOT to be considered urban project.
Unfortunately, those rules have just been changed.
Oh, really?
Yes. And that's one thing that Patty and I met with TDOT about. They've re, they've redone the numbers, and so we dropped to rural. So, we, we don't, we don't qualify for any federal funds.
Oh, I know. I'm sa, I'm stating for people who were, were asking, that to be considered urban, and I guess to get the federal funds, it has to be a population of 200,000 or above.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay.
Yes. And we do not meet that at all.
200,000. Oh, wow, okay.
Yes.
All right, we're, we're way far away from that.
Yes. And are, so are you aware about the transportation and planning grants from TDOT?
Yes.
Okay. And probably, I was hoping that maybe we can get our traffic study done, maybe with those, if we apply for one next year. Maybe they do them yearly.
Grants are always a good, a good opportunity to save taxpayer money.
And the housing, on the housing considerations, only because it's kind of a recent issue on, I guess, banks and financial groups buying up houses and renting them out, like single-family homes. Have you considered that? Are we having limitations to that within the city?
We're not allowed to tell people if they can have for purchase or rent. Does that answer the question?
Well, it's specifically for groups, not individuals. It's like financial investment, real estate investment groups.
I mean that as well.
Okay.
Yeah. We have, we have houses behind our Westwood Elementary right now, and if I, if they're still the same, they're, they're all rentals.
The entire subdivision.
Yeah. And that's just a, we can't, we can't tell people if they can have them for rent or for sale.
We can ask them.
We can ask, but we can't.
Can't demand.
Yeah.
And for the record, yes, I believe that this one development would cause significant problems if it has outlets on 100. I feel that, as I've been driving here for the last four years. So, that's just it. Just stating my opinion.
Thank you. Who's next?
I'm going to be really quick. I'm Deborah Buffalini. I'm from 4010 Brazelton Way, Fairview. I am exhausted. I'm sure everybody else here is. I already taught kids all day. And I'm going to jump around a little bit. I've been taking notes this whole time, so all my questions mostly came up from today and talking to people previous to today about the situation. For one, I personally just, I don't like the idea of building a bunch of apartments on one, Highway 100. And for my personal reasons, I moved to Fairview because it was spread out, and it was rural, and we thought it was absolutely gorgeous. And like my husband mentioned already, we had gone to several cities that had looked like that, and we ended up back in Fairview for the reason that it was so gorgeous. So, first, my few questions are, is, has this already been passed by the planning committee? Is that why it's coming up on September 5th, the vote for here?
It was a 4-4 tie.
It was a 4-4 tie.
So, it was, it was deemed that, it didn't pass, and it didn't fail. It was a tie vote.
So, on September 5th, you guys are still voting on it?
On September 5th, we have a public hearing, which everyone can come again and speak, and then we will take a vote as the second and final reading.
Are you allowed to say who all voted for and against?
In which vote?
For the committee, the planning committee that voted on this.
All the women voted for, and all the men voted against.
Okay, you're on the planning committee, right?
I mean, that, it's the truth.
Okay.
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, the women voted for it, and the men voted against it. And yes, I'm on it.
Okay, all right. So, you've already voted for this? You've already voted for this to pass?
Not, not to pass it.
Okay, but you agreed with the drawings that came in?
I agreed with our city staff and their recommendation for approval.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure this out, how it works, okay.
On the planning commission side, I sided with our paid staff, who are paid to, you know, look at all the-
But this was a close, this wasn't like, not all eight of you voted, thought this was a good idea based on what the staff had said. It was a 4-4, it was a very close vote.
The four women voted for it, and the four men voted against it.
Okay. So, my next question is, I just, I'm really concerned about the roads that they're going to be building there. How come it, nobody's, I, I don't know why, did the people that are paid, they didn't have any issue with the roads not being up to city code or city standard that are going to be built?
We've had other developments approved with the same situation. So, I guess it's case by case.
All right.
Just, just to make sure we give information there. To my knowledge, there is not a, a submittal approved or built with a 30-foot right-of-way with 22-foot of lane draft path, to my knowledge.
So, I'm just trying to picture, you know, I've even talked to people that work for the fire department. I'm trying to picture an emergency situation and people getting down with the roads. And I think that my biggest thing is that Fairview is one of the last places around that could be built up, and we've got a lot of leverage, and I think we're giving it up. And I think we have been giving it up for quite some time. We've got a lot of leverage on who comes here, who builds. For instance, I think that the planning committee could tell them, you've got to build roads to city standards. We can ask for a lot more. If we did have one-acre lots, we would make the property prices go up a lot here. And I do understand that they want some more affordable options. Are any of the apartments that are currently being built, or townhouses that are currently approved, are they going to be affordable, or just the ones that we're approving right now?
I don't know the ones, I don't know the price point of the ones-
That are already approved?
The one, I, I don't know the price point of the ones that are, have not been approved yet.
Okay, I think it may have been Brandon earlier, who had mentioned that if we pass this one, there's going to be more apartments approved right now than residential homes. Is that correct?
Townhomes.
Am I saying that the right way?
Townhomes.
Townhomes.
Townhomes and apartments combined, which is a multifamily. There, there's a 240-unit apartment project on Highway 96 towards the interstate that is slated on the books right now. It's supposed to be market rate rentals.
Market rate rentals, okay. So, we don't think that that's enough affordable housing, that we need to keep adding more, or this particular one that, I mean, this is a close vote. We're talking about 4-4 on the planning committee, and a lot of residents that do care about it. Could we ask for maybe a different plan to come forward, or just envision something a little bit different?
Our attorney always says, vote at what's submitted. It's not, it's not- Our attorney always says, vote at what's submitted. It's not, it's not our job or position to try and tell them how to design or develop, but review it against our standards that are in place. And so we review what they've submit to us.
Okay. All right. Just checking on that. All right. So I had a, sorry about that. My other question, has there ever been a study done that shows the impacts for the traffic outside of Fairview? So I know you guys were mentioning earlier that a lot of the traffic on Highway 100 in Fairview could be from other towns. Has there ever been any study that's shown that?
Not that I know of.
Or shown how much of the traffic is coming from outside of Fairview?
Not that I know of.
All right. So we don't even know if the traffic impact is from Fairview or coming from outside yet?
I just know that every time there's a wreck on the interstate, Highway 100 becomes Interstate 40. So 100's always impacted.
Okay.
I can give you one easy thing that is non-scientific. But if you go to Walmart tomorrow and count how many Hickman County license plates you see.
I have talked to people from Dixon. They do like our Walmart better than theirs.
And so does Bellevue.
And even Charlotte Pike, people from Bellevue and Nashville come here.
They say our Walmart's nicer, which we want to keep it that way, right, guys? We want to keep our Walmart nicer than everybody else's. All right. So I had a couple more questions and they may not go in order here. Another thing that came up, and this wasn't just from this, but there aren't any affordable commercial buildings to rent out for businesses in Fairview. There isn't any available that I know of. I mean, even if you could afford a high-priced one, there just isn't any available. And I know we have some coming into city center and I know that some of them have already been allocated to some high-priced or corporations. Is there gonna be anything that's built that's affordable to the people in Fairview that may want to start a business?
I can take that one if you want. So it's kind of like the, it's kind of like the business thing. At the end of the day, those are privately owned businesses that own those properties and they set the rates at whatever the market they think they can get for it. If they set them too high, they'll sit empty and they'll eventually lower the rate. But the rate is set by the market. I mean, we don't, we can't tell somebody, hey, I want you to build space over here for restaurants and you have to rent it at this price. I mean, that's.
Well, there are some people that own property, but in order to build, the codes have made it really expensive to even build anything. So I'm just wondering, I'm starting to feel like we're only gonna be able to have corporations. And I know not too long ago, there was a big argument that went over whether or not we could have food trucks in Fairview. And I think that's gonna be most people's only option if we don't either change the codes in that sense or we only allow for these big builders to come in and build things like 8,000-foot square foot restaurants, which we know that only a corporation's going to be able to afford.
Not disagreeing with that point at all. I'm just simply saying that this body does not have the ability to tell people what they have to rent their property for. And that's all I'm saying.
Right.
So whatever it is, is what it is.
And I just, I'm thinking when we have all these new apartments and this new beautiful city center that there might be people that want these food trucks even less in the town. And obviously, we know we're all for that. We had a long talk about that quite some time ago. Right? And I think that is it. All right. If you guys don't have any questions for me, I'm done.
Well, I own a small business and I'd like for my rent to go down.
I don't even think there are any available places, period. Like even if you wanted to rent something, there's just nothing available commercially. So I don't know if that's gonna, I mean, that could be more of a reason to build commercial. Oh, I did have one more question. I knew it. People are gonna be buying more farms in the future and wanting to build in the future. And when this buyer bought this land on 100, they should have had a surveyor. They should have known there were wetlands there and what they could and couldn't build and that it was commercial. Is every time a buyer buys land and there's some sort of issue with the land, is that gonna be put on Fairview to change what they are and aren't allowed to build? So this particular builder says he can't build commercial because of the wetlands? And we have to take that in? Or is that how that works usually?
Well, based on personal property rights, if you own something, you have the right to come before us and ask to have it changed to something else. Now, whether we do it is totally different ballgame, but.
So that is, but the commission can vote yes or no on something like that?
We have to vote on something like that?
No, I'm just saying, but the commission, if that comes before the commission, they say, well, we can't build on these wetlands. You can decide as a voting body whether or not they can change what they're doing. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
It changed, it changed from residential to commercial in the last 20 years. And then nothing commercial ever went on it. And now they're asking for something else. Yeah. Any zoning change can be brought to the planning commission and subsequently brought to the board, but it doesn't mean it's gonna pass.
Okay. But it is currently commercial still?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. So we can disagree or the voting board can disagree to allow them to build residential then?
100%.
Okay.
Yeah. And the only, the only thing I was pointing out is what my conversation with the fellow from TDEC, which his number's on that piece of paper. He just said that it is with the wetlands and the buffer zone around the wetlands on this property, it's just gonna be difficult to build commercial throughout the whole property. Not that they can't figure something out. It's just, he said it would be difficult because of how expensive it is to either, yeah, either mitigate or try to maneuver around the wetlands.
All right. And then I have just one last one. You guys were talking about the developers footing the bill earlier and I was just curious as to why there was a few of you that said, could we do it without the developer footing the bill? And I was just curious why we don't want the developers to be footing the bill for the traffic inspections and any other sort of expenses that are gonna come our way when they want to build here?
I think they should fit the bill. Did somebody say that they shouldn't?
I think possibly Commissioner Hall was misheard. I didn't hear what he said, but I don't think he would have said that when Mr. Cuddenham mentioned that. Because we have, the planning commission and the city staff has always passed on costs to the developers for things that we incur. We, the engineering fees that we get for looking at a project, we pass that back to the developer.
And maybe, maybe when I spoke about T-DOT, you know, they just told Patty and I that it would be pertinent for the plan to come to them so that they could give ideas of how to alleviate traffic and they don't charge for that. So it's not that I wanted to say, like, absolutely save our, you know, our taxpayers, but it had nothing to do with the developer. It had to do with more of a non-bias party being able to look at it and say, okay, this is a good plan. The developer could do this. This is how to alleviate traffic. So that's kind of where, where I went with that.
So in the past, have builders, when they come in, they've paid to have a traffic study done from a third-party vendor that you chose? Is that something that we're doing?
We don't choose them, I don't think.
No, we don't choose them. Our city attorney covered that the other day. We're gonna have to change our ordinances to where we can do that in the future.
I think that's extremely important because, I mean, if I had an insurance person that was my friend that came to my house, they're gonna say, you know, there's a lot of damage and I'm gonna get a lot of money from the insurance company. I think it's gonna be really important that we get that third-party out there to look at the traffic issues. Especially if we've only got T-DOT just coming and making suggestions, which is wonderful that they're doing it with no charge. Now, do they have money, T-DOT, to widen the road currently, Route 100?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Does T-DOT have, currently have the money to widen the road, Route 100?
Well, we don't qualify for help.
My answer would be yes.
They do have, but we don't qualify for the help.
They don't have the votes.
Okay. All right. Thank you all.
Highway 100 was put on for expansion for the gas tax bill 15, 20 years ago or so. And so it was identified as a future project and put and slated as funded. And so it was going to be done. And in their assessment, they invested, the state invested, I think, $3 billion extra dollars last year towards roads, trying to catch up on their backlog of the gas tax bill of roads they've never built. They made a 10-year plan with that big clump of funds and we fell off because last year we went from urban to rural. And so when we dropped our designation, now we're fighting for dollars to try and improve our roads where other areas' growth rates are substantially higher. And so now we've dropped down and we're fighting for dollars with other communities that have 100% growth rates or so and we're much, you know, we're under 10% according to our census growth. But it was funded. It was there. It was always told to us it was happening and our growth has been slower than the areas around us has pushed us to the bottom of the pile fighting for that money.
They had already started acquiring right-of-ways from homeowners. So.
All right. I'm just gonna go back to the first person that came up. Maybe we could slow down a little bit, take a pause until we get some traffic studies and some third-party studies looking at maybe the infrastructure and the road whiz. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Who's next?
Thanks, Thomas Walker, 7214 Dogwood Drive. I am in the city. I just have a couple of questions. On the Barquese plan, the house lots in the back, what is the final size, the latest lot size?
It was about 7,000? Around, is it around 7,000 square feet?
Minimum lot size is 5,000 square feet. They have some lots that are a little bit bigger based off going around corners. When they brought it back to us and we sent it back to the planning commission, they told, they told us what we thought was perceived value or perceptual value. So they included the buffer to make the lots sound or feel bigger, if that makes sense.
They already asked it for RS10, right?
Yep. That would allow them to build a 5,000-square-foot lot in that backside.
According to City of Fairview Building Codes, RS10 is a 10,000-square-foot lot. And if it's gonna be 55 by 125, like the last plan I seen, that's only 6,875 feet.
And that is why they have gone to the pod submittal? The pod allows you to go 50% of the base zoning on there. So an RS10 allows you to build a 5,000-square-foot lot. And that's where, that's why the pod's middle.
What about the trees on that lot? There's hundreds of mature trees that'll gone go away. You know, I hear you talking about.
Well, they either have to pay into the tree bank or they have to replace the trees.
They're not gonna do that. They're gonna plant six, six trees per 100 feet. So what good does it do to pay into the tree bank, you know, if all the trees are gone?
Well, the purpose of the tree bank is so that we can plant in other areas of our community.
Doesn't matter that they're gone from this as long as you plant them somewhere else.
Or pay into the tree bank to, so that we can, so that we can determine where that money is spent to do landscaping and trees.
Thank you.
Who's next?
Mary Kaiser, 7321 Cox Run Court in the city.
I can't hear you.
You can't hear me?
There you go. There you go.
Okay. Have you all given any consideration or talked to Nolan'sville or even talked about a cost-benefit analysis of doing an interim census?
That would be our city manager.
That might send me right on home.
That might send you home.
I've been involved in a special census and I swore I would never do it again. And the problem is.
Even if it would push you into a metro?
The problem, it won't. The problem is, is that, you know, the manpower it takes and then I don't know how many doors I had slammed in my face and I didn't care how much benefit that came, had the state street aid and this, that and the other. And I'm here to tell you, if, the only way I'd do it is if the US government came in and did it. And that's, it's just, it's, we would never see the benefit of the cost, the benefit.
Even if you would get grants?
Even if, no matter what. If the US government, US Census Bureau, if we could somehow figure out how to get them to do it, I'd be awful.
No, because they would subcontract it. So.
Well, that would be the only way I would be involved, unless I was told I had to. And then we would do the best we could. And I think everybody would see that it's a time of futility. And you can, you can go with a bunch of other folks. And another thing is, it's hard now to find anybody to certify your census. So you, I had to find, I had to get a guy out of East Tennessee to come in and certify. And it was, I called, I bet you 20 different places trying to find, they're just, it's just a hard, hard thing for a city to take on. So you can, you can ask around other cities that have done it. And I think you'll hear echo that it is really rough unless you have had so much growth that you've maybe.
But you were that close. You were that close in 2020.
I don't, I don't, I just don't see the benefit outweighing the, I just don't see the benefit. But you may be able to talk one of, one of the other people that I serve under and they may be able to change my mind. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all.
Who's next?
I'm Kathy Toroli and I live on Shepton Park and this is regarding Bowie Nature Park. We want to thank Brianna and Xena, Keith, Justin and Levi for all the work they do at Bowie Nature Park. And Brianna and Xena have really put together programs for the park. And the September edition of the Fairview Park System Newsletter is now available on the Bowie Nature Park website. They have a lot of activities coming up. We have yoga, star party, we have nature crafts, we have a autumn hike coming up. And next would be the Friends of Bowie. Our next meeting is Saturday, September the 14th, 9 o'clock at Bowie Nature Center. The Friends Garden Crew meets every Tuesday at 8 o'clock. Come and join us. And we have a special occasion on September 24th. The Friends will be celebrating their 30th anniversary. Nature Fest will be September 21st from 9 to 4. And the Parks and Landscaping Meeting this month has been changed to Monday, September the 9th, 7 o'clock, Triangle School. So thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Okay. Do any of the board members have anything that they would like to share with the town? They're in our town hall, our city, they're in our town hall.
I can start just by saying thanks to the last of the Mohicans here that decided to stick it out to the very end. So appreciate it. To everyone who came out today, tonight, and everyone who watched from home, and, you know, we appreciate the involvement. Would love to see you here more often, but if it takes something to get you riled up and to come and give us your opinion, well, then that's okay too. Have a good night.
Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Hall?
I just thanks everyone that came out and that I let them know that I'm still looking to everything I can to make sure that this project either goes or doesn't go. But I'm not, I'm doing everything I can to find the actual facts of everything that they've got going on in this project. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Just echo, thank you for everybody coming. I enjoyed digging into the weeds. I enjoy the town halls and the discussion. Thank you, guys.
Okay. So this is for the board. If we have another town hall in 2024, it's Halloween. So we don't want to do it on Halloween. So we do have, just like we did this, this time, you know, I don't want people to, I mean, maybe we can put something out somewhere at Walmart or a flashing thing in front of City Hall or something stating, you know, when we're having meetings. But I just want to put it out there that in October, there is a 5th Tuesday. So if we don't meet again, if we don't meet on the 5th Tuesday in October, the next 5th Thursday is January 2025. So it doesn't matter to me. It's up to y'all. Do we want to meet?
So doesn't matter to me. It's up to y'all. Do we wanna meet Tuesday, um, the 5th Tuesday in October, or do we wanna wait until January? Is that good?
Um, I'm out of town, but I'm chopped liver by then anyway, so...
Oh, good grief. Wayne, is that good with you? 5th Tuesday in October?
Okay, so I'm gonna say it live. Let's share with all of our friends. We'll try to put it up at Walmart or something if they'll let us. I'll check into that. So it'll be the 5th Tuesday in October at 7 o'clock here at City Hall, and that will be our next town hall meeting. Um, I do want to let everyone know that we have a local paper out here called the Main Street. And they're doing award ceremony on Thursday morning, two days from now, Thursday morning at 7:30. And there are many of our different restaurants and retail and, you know, different things, people that have been voted on, uh, with this, uh, you know, for the awards. So this year, last year, they did it live, but Facebook Live. This year, they're doing it live, live at the, um, Historic Triangle School. So if anybody can make it out there, um, we have, um, several, um, who have, uh, are finalists with our city. And that would be the 3rd of July Celebration, Nature Fest, Friends of Bowie Nature Park, Bowie Nature Park, uh, Fairview Ballpark, Brandon Butler, myself and Chris McDonald. So we've all, we've got several people who have... What? Okay, so Chris said he was on there by accident, so he removed himself. Anyway, so, okay, so scratch him. Uh, but anyway, we've got, it, from the list, we've got several people who are receiving awards as well as local restaurants, retail. Um, and, you know, it'd be a fun time to come out and support, um, you know, the winners and, and the finalists. It is this Thursday morning, Triangle School at 7:30. So if anybody can attend, I, I know that, um, we need to let Richard know. I think I've already let Richard know. But, you know, he's such an integral part of our events with, uh, Nature Fest and 3rd of July and the Christmas parade. I would like for, you know, if, um, I'm just gonna venture to say that our 3rd of July, it's a bomb. So it probably, I'm hoping it wins. So, you know, I'd like for Richard to accept that award because he's worked so diligently, uh, to make that a success. Anyway, so, um, thank you, everyone, for coming out. Thank you for the ones who are still here. We always wanna hear what you have to say. We don't have an easy job up here. I'm telling you that right now. So the ones who are running for the seats, just know that, you know, we, I think all of us do the best we can with what we have. And we just try to make sure that we make a choice that's best for the whole community. And, um, with that, I hope y'all have a great night and, um, see you at the next town hall.